Okay, I'll call to order the special meeting Placer County Board of Supervisors for Monday, July 26, 2021, and we will start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
My pleasure, Agent. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, this is a special meeting to consider a third-party appeal, Planning Commission's approval of the Rancho del Oro Estates vesting tentative map. So we're going to start with that item, and we're going to hear first a presentation by staff, then the appellant will get 15 minutes, or essentially what you need, but I think that's well covered, and then the applicant of the project will get the same, and then we'll open it up to the public for three minutes. So with that, Angel, are you going to kick it off?
Yes, good morning.
I'm going to jump ahead real quick.
EJ, you're going to kick it off.
I'm going to attempt to kick it off. So, good morning, Chairman, Board members. EJ Avaldi with the Planning Services Division. I'm also joined here with Angel Green, who's also with the Planning Services Division. So this item before you today is a third-party appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a subdivision map modification for the 89 lot Rancho del Oro project to allow pad grading on 47 lots concurrent with construction of subdivision improvements. As approved originally, the project was required to submit individual grading permits for these 47 lots. The project was approved in 2010. There are approved improvement plans for this project for the initial subdivision improvements and the contour grading that affects about 42 lots. Construction began last month and is currently underway. I was just advised last week, or confirmed last week, that there has been some construction activities on three of the lots that are subject to the appeal. There have been some trees removed on those three lots. I'm going to have the applicant speak to that during their presentation, and staff is also available to speak to that as well. But first, I'd like to get to the appeal matter itself. I'm going to have Angel Green present that item for now.
Thanks, EJ. Angel.
Thank you all. Good morning, members of the board and chairman. Angel Green with the Planning Services Division. The item before you today is an appeal regarding the Planning Commission's approval of a subdivision map modification to the Rancho del Oro Estates project to allow for pad grading on 47 lots concurrent with the construction of subdivision improvements. The project site is located on the north side of Olive Ranch Road in the Granite Bay area. We have Miners Ravine located along the entire northern boundary of the site. Lawrence Estate subdivision is located to the west, and to the east, we have the Shadow Oaks neighborhood. And to the south, we have several lots developed with single-family residences. Here are photos taken a few months ago prior to construction commencing. The approved Rancho del Oro project includes 89 single-family residential lots ranging in size from 42,000 to roughly 53,000 square feet. There are eight open space lots and one common area lot for the purposes of containing a sewer lift station. The open space lots are for the purposes of preserving and protecting natural resources on-site and to provide for onsite stormwater detention. By way of background, on October 5th of 2010, the board took action to approve the Rancho del Oro project and to certify the EIR. In 2013, we had a subdivision map modification approved to reduce the onsite private road easements and to allow for contour grading necessary to address drainage issues that were discovered on-site. In 2013, we had a substantial conformance finding that was made to allow for the relocation of an internal road intersection and for minor adjustments to lot lines. In 2015, we had a substantial conformance finding that was made, which allowed for lot layout changes to the approved tentative map to ensure protection of cultural resources on-site consistent with the project's conditions of approval. Improvement plans were recently approved by the county on June 15th for all subdivision improvements, including internal roadways, infrastructure, and contour grading. The improvement plan approval did not include pad grading for the 47 lots that are currently under appeal. Construction of the subdivision improvements commenced shortly after. We currently have an expiration date for the final map recordation, April 5th, 2023, and the applicant does have available one remaining extension of time that may be requested. In addition to the residential and open space lots, the approved vesting tentative map includes preliminary grading areas, which anticipated the construction of backbone infrastructure as well as fill within specific lots in natural swell areas. The project's conditions of approval limit the grading to that shown on the preliminary grading plan. Any grading that would occur during subdivision improvements not identified on the plan require approval by the Planning Commission. This is a standard condition of approval that is applied to most tentative subdivision maps, so that any grading beyond that shown on the preliminary plan, such as mass grading and residential pad grading, be referred back to the Planning Review, Planning Commission for review. In 2013, the Planning Commission approved a subdivision map modification to the vesting tentative map. The applicant's new project engineer in designing the onsite road profile grades and stormwater drainage system set grades and evaluated overland release paths, and this was necessary to improve the lot drainage away from future structures and towards the roadways. The contour grading affected roughly 42 lots. The Planning Commission also approved a reduction to the private roadway width from 40 feet to 28 feet, which further reduced impacts to sensitive resources on-site. The Planning Commission found the 2013 revised tentative map grading plan to be in substantial conformance with the 2010 project approvals, also determined that the mitigation measures in the previously certified EIR would reduce any potential grading impacts to a less than significant level. In February of this year, Rob Parrish, on behalf of Socopolis Investments, filed an application to modify the Rancho del Oro vesting tentative map to allow for pad grading on 47 residential lots concurrent with the construction of the subdivision improvements. The proposed changes would add a 100 by 140-foot building pad on each of the 47 lots, and this would be outside of the area that's been previously approved for contour grading. The blue area shown here, also Figure 4 of your staff report, represent the contour grading and subdivision improvements that were approved by the Planning Commission in 2013. A potential home builder has an interest now in building semi-custom homes on the Rancho del Oro Estates project. This differs from the original approval, which anticipated custom lots being sold to individual buyers and constructed incrementally over time, whereas the proposed pad grading here that's proposed on the 47 lots would be completed concurrent with the subdivision improvements. Shall your board take action to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision, the applicant will be required, as they currently are, to submit 47 individual grading permits for the subject 47 lots for the county's staff review and approval. If your board takes action to uphold the appeal and overturn the Planning Commission's decision, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. If your board takes action to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the modification, the applicant will be required to revise the improvement plans and obtain county approval prior to construction of the pad foundations for the 47 lots. But if your board takes action to uphold the appeal and overturn the Planning Commission's decision, the applicant will be required, as they currently are, to submit 47 individual grading permits for the 47 lots for county staff review and approval. Additional detail provided by the applicant for the pad foundations include the location of contour grading, conceptual driveway locations, associated grading accompanying these improvements, which represents approximately 29% of the one-acre lots. Per Condition of Approval 13, the applicant's request to make changes to the preliminary grading plan were referred to the Planning Commission. The request here prompted staff's review of all other project conditions of approval, which necessitated the following modifications. For Condition 12, these are necessary to address the completion of pad grading for all residential lots. For Condition of Approval 20, this would address finished house pad elevations for the lots that are located within the 100-year flip plane line. Other refinements not related to the project proposal include revisions to Condition of Approval 144, which were recommended by staff to address public and pedestrian access, which came up during final map review. Condition of Approval 59, which was to modify the timing of payment for tree mitigation per the applicant's request. This request has since been withdrawn. All tree impact fees have been paid, so the modification is no longer needed. The proposed modifications to the approved project require preparation of an addendum to the previously certified EIR. The addendum includes a number of new discussion items that are shown here that were added. SEQA guidelines have changed since 2010. This addendum evaluated the environmental impacts that may result from the modified project and confirmed that no significant impacts or substantial increase in the severity of previously identified impacts would result. The oak woodland and significant tree impact analysis prepared for the modification, which is also included in the addendum and Figure 6 of the staff report, estimates the total direct impacts associated with the approval of the construction of subdivision improvements as approved in 2010, contour grading that was anticipated in the 2013 approval, as well as proposed pad grading currently under consideration. In total, we see that 54.68 acres of the 89 acres of total oak woodland on-site would be impacted due to the 2010 and 2013 approvals, as well as the proposed 47 lots. The previously certified EIR notes that 100% of significant oak trees within the building setbacks were assumed to be impacted for mitigation purposes. However, trees could be retained by individual homeowners. The mitigation proposed for oak woodland and significant trees is therefore conservatively overestimated and therefore overmitigated. The applicant has paid in full the required mitigation for all oak woodland on-site, again 78.91 acres, and all significant trees within the development footprint, roughly 2,100 On May 13th of this year, the Planning Commission took action to approve the subdivision map modification and to allow for pad grading of the 47 residential lots, and found these changes to be in substantial conformance with the vesting tentative map that was approved in 2010. Although the original project approvals currently allow for individual grading permits to be submitted for each of the 47 lots, the Planning Commission's approval of the tentative map modification would allow for the pad grading to be included on the preliminary grading plan, or rather, the revised set of improvement plans, and would be constructed concurrently with the subdivision improvements. Shortly after the Planning Commission's approval, an appeal was filed by Ms. Amber Beckler. The issues raised in the appeal are centered around the impacts to oak woodlands, mitigation requirements, and grading activity, which I will cover in more detail. And I'll start first with Ms. Beckler's concerns regarding oak woodland impacts. A detailed description of the acreages of impacted oaks and significant trees has been provided in the staff report. For the tree impact analysis provided in the addendum, again, we see a total for the project in its entirety, which includes, again, the 2010, 2013 approvals, as well as the proposed grading activity. We see that the total impact out of the 78 acres of on-site oak woodlands would be roughly 54.68 acres. This differs from the 2010 analysis, which was estimated at 17.55 acres. The difference is that the 17.55 acres only included impacts resulting from the subdivision improvements for the purposes of identifying the mitigation fees that would need to be paid by the developer upfront with the approval of the improvement plans. The mitigation fees that would be paid by the developer upfront would cover those, related to those improvements, and then the remainder would be due at the time of building permit issuance for the individual lot owners. Although all oak woodland impacts on the individual lots were anticipated or accounted for, the original table only noted the direct impacts of the subdivision improvements in the EIR. The EIR anticipated that the impacts associated with the subdivision improvements in lot development and mitigation required for the full 78.91 acres of oak woodland on-site and all significant trees within the development footprint, again, roughly 2,100 inches, would be required for the project. The Planning Commission found that the modification before you today is within the scope of the original project described in the certified EIR, and that no further mitigation would be required. Ms. Beckler asserts that since the tree survey was done over 10 years ago, there is likely to be a chance that additional significant oak trees on the project site have grown and may have increased. Staff agrees this certainly could be a possibility. However, the county currently does not consider a change in the environment and potential impacts after a project is approved. Because this project previously mitigated for all oak woodland and significant trees on-site, the proposed lot grading did not warrant a reevaluation of on-site conditions. Additionally, pad grading on the 47 lots concurrent with subdivision improvements would not result in any increase in impacts than what is currently permitted if 47 individual grading permits are submitted. As previously stated, the project's entitlements include a vesting tentative map, which is intended to establish vested rights to proceed with a project in substantial conformance with the regulations in effect at the time that the vesting tentative map is approved. Given that the modification is within the scope of the original project described in the certified EIR, a reevaluation of site conditions is not warranted. Request to limit future tree removal. Condition of Approval 132 requires approval of a tree permit for any future removal of healthy trees that were not previously approved for tree removal. Removal of these trees would require mitigation from future homeowners. While the project applicant has mitigated for tree loss related to the project improvements and construction of the homes and driveways on individual lots, a permit would still be required, potentially resulting in double mitigation. And the lots associated with this subdivision would also be subject to the provisions of the Placer County Tree Preservation Ordinance. Moving on now to project tree mitigation requirements. Ms. Beckler asserts that the county fell to evaluate current impact fees for significant tree and oak woodland impacts in line with current known value of oak trees and in line with other current project costs. This modification does not propose to increase the number of units or the intensity of development. The project would be required to comply with all mitigation measures identified in the project's EIR. The Subdivision Map Act and the Placer County Code conveys a vested right to the developer to proceed with development in substantial compliance with the ordinances, policies, and standards in place at the time that the vesting tentative map was approved. Additionally, the Planning Commission's approval of the modification with no changes to the tree mitigation fees is also consistent with Condition of Approval 59 and mitigation measure 5-9A, which states that the payment shall be equivalent to the fair market value of a conservation easement on oak woodland property in Placer County with such fair market value established at the time of approval of the tentative subdivision map for the Ms. Beckler asserts that the county fell to address oak woodland mitigation fees previously identified in the EIR. So in summary, mitigation measure 5-9A requires the project to mitigate for all 78.91 acres of potential oak woodland impact within the development footprint. Mitigation measure 5-9B requires the project to mitigate for impacts to significant trees resulting from subdivision improvements as well as lot development. And to note, the applicant has paid in full both mitigation fees for oak woodland impacts and for significant trees, and has demonstrated compliance with the project's conditions of approval and mitigation measures. We'll move on now to tree mitigation fees and rates. Ms. Beckler requests that the county consider the following: the need for a current impact fee assessment, payment, and the basis for the impact fees for significant trees and oak woodland, and where the fees will go; also, a fair hearing related to the viability of the Placer County Tree Impact Fee Schedule that was used in the approved EIR. Staff does not believe that these items here are project-related, but as previously stated, the fee approved in the mitigation measure was established at the time the project was approved, and additionally, the Planning Commission did not recommend a revision or update to the tree mitigation fees. Ms. Beckler asserts that the assessed impact fees should be spent on projects in Granite Bay. The county's process currently does not call for the selection of a particular project or area to be determined in relation to the vicinity of the project requiring mitigation. However, tree preservation fees have been used in Granite Bay in the past and will likely be used again in the future. And I have a few listed here on the screen. Moving on now to grading impacts. All right, Ms. Beckler asserts that the county fell to demonstrate with evidence that the project modification with pad grading would be less impactful. The modification proposes to add 100 by 140-foot pad dimensions to the preliminary grading plan, which represents approximately 29% of each of the residential one-acre lots. For demonstration purposes here, we have for the 2010 and 2013 grading limits showing the development footprint of the approved project. This is what staff expects to see from the build-out of the approved project based on the assumptions in the EIR. The blue areas here represent the grading limits for the subdivision improvements relating to the 2010 and 2013 approvals, which impacts approximately 42 lots. The pink areas here represent the grading limits for the remaining 47 lots, as conservatively mitigated for in the EIR. As approved, a grading plan would be required to be submitted concurrent with the building permits for each of these 47 lots. This is what we anticipate to see with the refinement of the pad lot locations as proposed in the modification in comparison to the assumptions for the approved project. With the proposed pad grading shown here on the right, disturbance of each lot will be contained primarily within the pad area shown in pink. Mass grading of the site would not occur as a result of this modification. If we take a closer look at the 2010 vesting tentative map, and I've zoomed in here to Lot 62, the vesting tentative map includes location of the setback requirements for each lot where development of the site, including tree removal, could occur. On the right, we have the proposed building pads, again, representing 29% of each of the one-acre lots. And with that, the grading activity associated with the pad lot foundations would be well within the anticipated grading activity, anticipated to occur within the setback limit shown on the vesting tentative map. Ms. Beckler requests clarification of the mitigation requirements for the preconstruction surveys that are required prior to ground disturbance. The EIR requires roughly five surveys that are required prior to construction activity. Each of these studies specify the appropriate time to conduct the surveys so that the species can be identified. Based upon the results of the preconstruction surveys, the county and wildlife agencies will determine the appropriate conservation measures, as we have done for the project currently under construction. To date, the applicant has complied with all necessary preconstruction surveys for the portion of the project that's currently under construction. These same conditions will apply to the modification if approved. Ms. Beckler also had concerns regarding the wildlife corridors and questions why these were not addressed in the EIR. The project site does not support important wildlife movement corridors or habitats that would attract larger concentrations of wildlife. Implementation of the proposed project would also not constrain the movement of wildlife. While the project would remove oak woodlands on the west and east sides of the project site, these are not considered wildlife corridors due to the surrounding existing development. Also, the modification does not change any of the conclusions or mitigation measures in the EIR. So staff has found the appeal issues raised by Ms. Beckler not warranted. The Planning Commission considered the subdivision map modification and found the proposed change to allow for the pad grading of the 47 residential lots concurrent with subdivision improvements is in substantial conformance with the approved vesting tentative map. As such, staff recommends your board uphold the decision of the Planning Commission and to take the following actions supported by the findings contained in the staff report: first, to deny the third-party appeal filed by Ms. Amber Beckler; to uphold the Planning Commission's May 13, 2021 decision to adopt the addendum to the previously certified environmental impact report prepared for the Rancho del Oro Estates project pursuant to SEQA, supported by the findings contained in the staff report; and third, to uphold the Planning Commission's May 13, 2021 decision to approve the Rancho del Oro Estates vesting tentative map modification, supported by the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. With that, I'm available for any questions. We also have a number of county staff and the project biologists available to answer any questions.
Thanks, Angel. Any questions of board members at this time? I see none. And so, EJ, you said part of your presentation was going to be a comment by the applicant? Did I understand that correctly?
Just for protocol, I think we would go to the appellant next, to have the appellant do their presentation.
Right, I thought maybe as a part of your presentation that you were going to have those comments made by the applicant.
That's up to the board. I'm perfectly comfortable waiting for the appellant to speak, and then we'll follow up with them. follow up with the applicant.
So let's go to the appellant, Amber, and you'll have your time, and then we'll go to the applicant of the project and take it from there.
Excellent. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And the presentation, okay, it's up there. Excellent. Okay, good morning. I'm Amber Beckler. I live in Granite Bay. Angel, thank you for the presentation and providing many clarifications that I did request, so I do appreciate that. I have a short presentation that I think will take about 15 minutes just to provide a little more clarity in some of the gaps that I still think remain and the still, I believe, the option to update the tree mitigation fees, and I'll walk through those with you today. So you should have my package in front of you as well. If I go to the next slide, if we just take a step back and look at the objective and why I filed an appeal, in the Planning Commission meeting on May 13, it was, I'm going to say, confusing to understand what was being pad graded versus contour graded, and then how that then changed the significant impacts or not. And so when I first provided my public comment, it came from a place of not really fully having clarity on what the impacts were. And I'll get to an example in just a second. But just to sort of reiterate, what I had noticed is that the in-lu fees and required mitigation measures seem to need to be updated for not only the county but also the general public so that we can actually ensure feasible measures could mitigate impacts. So if you think about oak woodlands to mitigate back in 2010 versus having to mitigate oak woodland loss in 2021, it's a very different situation. I also request that the county bring those outdated mitigation measures for woodland up to a fair market value, and I'll give you a couple of examples that we can walk through. I think you could use the PCCP as a baseline metric because the county did adopt the PCCP What I'll walk through quickly is my five appeal concerns, of which Angel covered many of the questions, but I'll just point out a few key points for you. I have a couple map exhibits that I'd like you to see to sort of validate my perspective and where I still see that there are gaps and opportunities. I will show the tree mitigation comparable fees, and then I have a couple slides that are the requested appeal actions before you today. So on the next slide, there were five key questions. So I filed my appeal May 20, and then I provided a 24-page supporting documentation about 30 days after. I did some pretty extensive research to make sure I had my facts and figures and relevant while I was providing the input. So first one is really how was it substantiated that impacts to oak trees and oak woodland are the same or less than previously described with a revised grading plan? I completely understand that the pad grades, obviously, the idea is you remove less trees and you save the trees in the entire lot, but there's really no guarantee that those trees wouldn't be removed. So I still believe there's an issue there. The second point was, in the staff report on May 13, the oak woodland fees were actually not stipulated in the report. The only cost that was identified was $213,100 for these significant trees. And so Angel provided clarification today, but that wasn't available in the staff report, and it's still not in the conditions before you in the current staff report. Number three, the next piece was related to the natural resource fees. When I looked at the staff report, it seemed to me that you could see multiple fees were updated: traffic mitigation fees, sewer fees, inspection fees, yet none of the natural resource fees were updated. So that caused me pause to wonder, you know, why is that? And the fourth piece was whether the appropriate mitigation and monitoring measures were identified because the project originally stated to start in the fall would begin construction in May, obviously in the middle of nesting season. And then the fifth point was how the mitigation fees could be used to preserve open space and wildlife quarters in Granite Bay. Separate from the appeal after I have filed it, my additional concern, and I'll touch on it at the end of my presentation, was that trees continued to be cleared even after the appeal was filed. I did get clarification that the appeal covered 47 lots a couple weeks later. First, it was subdivision improvements, then it was 47 lots. Then I understood that there was drainage on some of the 47 lots, so that was justified. So it was very confusing for an appellant and just a public citizen as well. Also, in the original appeal, or in the original grading plan, there is refinements to the contour grading. So the contour grading actually was updated per the staff report statement. And then obviously, it had the proposed pad grading. The other piece before I move on is that the fees that were actually paid for the tree mitigation occurred after my appeal was filed. And for me, I thought that was a little strange only because my appeal really centered around the tree mitigation fees, and so I would have thought those fees may be suspended until we resolved whether current market value should be applied to fees rather than the county accepting the payment from the applicant. So the next slide, it's a bit of an eye chart, but I wanted to just bring up a couple of the things, and Angel did a great job of clarifying the original 17 acres, which was part of the subdivision improvements, knowing now that the 55 acres roughly of oak woodland are subdivision improvements plus the lot grading. That I understand. I still don't feel that you can assert that it's going to be the same or less especially because you just don't know what's going to happen on those lots. Also, there's been evidence by many people in the community that trees were removed on the lots, and so just observation alone makes you sort of wonder what would happen to the entire lots, whether the tree removal would be constrained to the actual building footprint. The other thing to call attention to, in addition to in 2010, you can see on the bottom of the legend, there were 69 trees, significant trees, that were identified to be directly impacted, and then 42 where the canopy drip line was encroached. In 2021, in the staff report, it showed 92 trees in lot development and then 110 trees by subdivision improvements. So even in the exhibit in May 13, there was identified new significant trees, except for the fees in condition 59 on the right-hand column, always referred back to the 69 impacted by subdivision improvements and 2,131 inches impacted by lot development. So the numbers still don't add up. And so if you just set that aside for a second, any logical person would conclude that over a 10-year period, oak trees grow. There's blue oak woodland on the western side of the property, and then there's live oak woodland and some mixed oak woodland on the eastern side of the property. Blue oaks grow slower, live oaks grow faster, and you could do some calculations and, you know, determine that there are likely many more significant trees that would fall under the need for CEQA to mitigate for those impacts. And that's part of the reason I feel like they're still not mitigating all the significant impacts that have been identified currently. The other, just really quick on this, is that the qualification that you can't count new trees, the EIR never stated anything or had any caveats to say the actual number of trees wouldn't be recounted or reevaluated upon time of tree removal. And therefore, I would assert that you can do a new survey or use the existing 2009 tree survey and apply growth factors to determine the new number of significant trees. It's commonly done, and I even did some quick math for myself. So moving on to the next slide, this is really focused on oak woodlands. So if you think of condition 59, it's broken out into two parts. There's significant trees, which we just spoke about, and then there's oak woodland. So even if you assume that there's now the 55 acres that covers subdivision improvement and lot development, the actual easement estimate of the 4,000 on the left-hand side is totally disproportionate in what it takes to actually acquire and preserve conservation easements for oak woodland in Placer County. So if you look on the left-hand side, and I won't go through this in detail, but the Rancho del Oro project, as stated, is paying around $500,000, and you see the breakdown of how that payment is divided. If you think about the PCCP comparable estimate for land conversion, which focuses on oak woodland, the equivalent fee would be $1,105,000 and some change, and that's based on the criteria in that second column. I did a bunch of research around surrounding counties to see how they were mitigating for oak woodland. And El Dorado County was a county that recently updated their oak woodland management plan. I think it was in about 2017. And they had a number of estimates. They do three-to-one ratio for replanting, whereas this project only has to do one-to-one. They charge 459 per inch for heritage oaks and then 153 for non-heritage oaks, whereas this project was only charged 100. And then you can see the total cost, if you use El Dorado's estimate, just as a comp. On the last column, I'm sort of a junkie when it comes to real estate, and so I love looking at properties. I've actually toured properties up on Big Hill Road that are prime oak woodland. And so I started doing just some real estate comps, and you can find, if you had to acquire oak woodland to mitigate the impacts, it would at minimum run you about $700,000 to get the equivalent 80 acres, and that doesn't include miners' ravine or the wetland that's on-site at the Rancho del Oro property. And that's if you mitigate off-site in a very rural part of Placer County, beautiful but very rural. In Granite Bay, even per the housing element that you approved recently, the average home sale price is over $1 million. And so there's a couple of comps that are actually right around Rancho del Oro of actual oak woodland properties that would run you about $450,000 for one-and-a-half acres or $750,000 for a five-acre lot. You start doing the math, and that multiplier starts to grow dramatically. So if you think about just the key point here is that the, by approval of the vesting tentative map modification and the addendums to the EIR, that then enables you to bring up those values to current market rate, which is stated in condition 59. These are just some examples you can use for reference. The next slide that I'll just touch on briefly is the Placer County tree fee schedule. I understand this is deemed out of scope for this conversation, but it actually is referenced in condition 132 in the staff report. So it probably is in scope, and I would just ask the board to consider at some point in the future to consider updating the tree fees to create a deterrent for removing our beautiful natural resources rather than a nuisance. You can see Placer County is at $100. It's the lowest of all counties and cities in the region, and the average is $221. Hitting very quickly, and then I'll get to the actions. The project did start grading and vegetation removal during nesting season, and there were a number of concerns, not only by me but many in the community, about the impacts of this. And I'll actually talk about it more specifically when I talk about the conditions, but I still believe that there needs to be clarity on some of the actual surveys that were conducted by the biologists and the findings, and then the approvals to actually begin vegetation removal. And you can see the slide on the top right is what I call the oak graveyard pile, and that's of the area of the contour grading, where massive numbers of oaks were removed as part of the project. So moving forward to the requested appeal actions, I'm not going to read through every one of these, but just the quick highlight. Number one, I don't believe that the county has taken into consideration baseline issues which would trigger the need for EIR to do supplemental review: the drought, fire hazard, climate change. These are all things that you wouldn't have known at the time that the EIR was completed in 2010, but we do know now. Number two, condition 10 and 13, that's all about the ground disturbance and whether that happened appropriately based on my appeal being filed. Number three, five, and six, I'm not going to restate, but these are the actual significant tree and oak woodland mitigations. I'm requesting that these be updated to current market value and also a new tree survey be done so you can actually account for the true number of significant impacts. Because that can get really complicated, and it could slow the project down, you could use the PCCP. It has a land conversion fee. You've approved those fees, and you could, you know, agree to do that, and we could walk out today with the revised number, and then impacts be actually mitigated appropriately. The, I'll go to the next slide. The items here are, were actually from a number of organizations that I worked with. So oak tree drip line, condition 60, is not, does not reflect state standard for the actual disturbance zone, so I would request that be updated. Condition 70, there, I talked to a U.S. Wildlife Service biologist that's working on this project, and they did find elderberry bushes, and so I request clarity in the mitigation updates that are going to be required for that. Native plant species reported. If you look at the native plant report, it actually identifies blue oaks as a non-native species, which just calls into question the sort of accuracy and precision of the reports. 74 and 75 are all about the raptor nest. There's a red-shouldered hawk that was identified there. I contacted the county a number of times, and so did residents. And even though the 500-foot constraint area was around the nest, tree clearing continued over multiple weekends, and the roadway, you could see up in the grape pine, there's a huge raptor nest, and the trees were all cleared on the roadway, then they continued removing trees around the wetland. So I don't know if those approvals were in place. I'm just going based on what I saw. And quickly, since I know I'm running out of time here, the final, the final items for 76 is the songbird survey. If you look at the actual biologist map, you can see there's no nests in the eastern part of the property. And it kind of makes you wonder, because it's heavily oak trees, so I don't know if they did actually survey the full extent, and the conditions specify exactly that you have to survey on and within a boundary buffer of the project site. So I would like clarity there as well. Condition 131, 132 is about the homeowner obligations, and then there's conflicting information on 132 about the size of trees that would have to be impacted, and then whether you use the county's tree fee schedule. 15, and I know I'm done here, just...
Go ahead, Amber. You're fine.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And finally, on 15, I know that the county tree mitigation fund has been used in Granite Bay, and Angel provided some of those examples. Granite Bay, in a recent MAC hearing, it was shown, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but since 2004, there's been about 400 lots that have been built. Pretty small number. Granite Bay's a rural residential community. In this year alone, there's over 400 lots being built across 15 development sites all at the same time. So if you think about the cumulative impacts of wildlife, not just ones that are protected, but coyotes, foxes, all mammals that weren't surveyed that definitely were impacted by this project are going to be impacted by this project and others. So it's just a request to see if we can use some of those dollars to help actually mitigate some of these effects. And then finally, those are really the primary appeal concerns and gaps and opportunities, as I like to call them. The thing that was difficult for me to understand, and I have a simple timeline here, is May 20, when I filed my appeal, I then noticed and got word from a number of neighbors that trees were being cleared, and I sent a note to the county and got very good response. So thank you, EJ and Angel. And it still was unclear to me, though, whether, how this was happening when my appeal centered around tree mitigation, again, that covered the entire project site, and how that was actually possible. Then fast forward to July 17, when I went over on a Saturday and there was massive tree removal happening right within the nesting constraint of that raptor, that's when I noticed not only trees being removed right around the wetland, but the roadway that was right next to the raptor nest tree had been cleared, I don't know, weeks ago. I'm not really sure. I'm hoping that I can get clarification. So my expectation was that when I filed the appeal, there would be some stay of activity on the project site until some of these issues were resolved. Seems to me like a reason... Seemed to me like a reasonable request. I hope that somehow in the future that county departments, what I felt I got responses was the engineering department didn't seem they even knew that there was an appeal filed. And so they had inspectors out there, but said, "Well, the applicant paid the fees, so we gave them the go-ahead." And yet, in the planning department, they knew of my appeal. And so I just feel like maybe there's a more systemic issue that could be looked into just to make sure this doesn't happen in the future. I also just want to reiterate that my appeal, it focused, and the staff report even says that the contour grading was refined in addition to the proposed grading activity, and then the payment of fees was actually, it happened after my appeal. In addition to what Angel described, Conditions 10, 82, and 84 were actually also updated, and those were the fees as well, that were not natural resource related. So I promise I'm wrapping up now. And I just want to read a final conclusion. "I filed the appeal to drive a need for clarity and transparency into the actual impacts of natural resources based on what was defined in 2010 compared to 2021. The appeal centered around tree mitigation adequacy, lack of evidence substantiating county claims that the new lot grading would be the same or less, based on no data other than speculation that all trees wouldn't be removed in the new plan. There is no guarantee of that, especially given fire requirements in today's environment. The exhibits were confusing, and while I do appreciate planning providing more clarity, the information, as you could see from my example, still has conflicting numbers for significant trees compared to what's actually been paid based on Condition 59. The tree survey was done over a decade ago and not update, not updated to reflect new numbers. And even in the original 2008 and then 2009 update, it identified Rancho Del Oro as a key wildlife corridor. It said the eastern portion of the woodland is a corridor for wildlife, especially with the connection to Miners Ravine, knowing that there was a vested tentative map to the east of that. So even in the biological survey, it was identified as a wildlife corridor. The requested modification to the vested tentative subdivision map and EIR addendum include a new grading proposal, refined contour grading boundaries, established building footprints, and then shifted the timing of impact. Given the project cannot go forward as proposed in the absence of a requested modification of that vested tentative map, the plain language of the 2010 EIR requires that oak woodland impact fees be updated to correspond to fair market value required for in-kind purchase and maintenance of conservation easements on oak woodland parcels." So in closing, I, you know, I appreciate your time. I hope it was clear on some of the concerns that I have and that I still feel there are gaps and opportunities to close. I do have a legal counsel on the phone if there are any questions or clarity that you would need in the letter that I sent to you all on Friday. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So the applicant now will get equal time, and then, excuse me, first, though, Amber, are there any questions by board members? I don't see any, but I just was remiss in not asking. We're good, thanks. And then we'll open it up to the public for comment after that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard. On behalf of a property owner who's owned his property for over four decades, I'm pleased to be before you with the support of your staff and recommendation for approval, as well as the unanimous approval by the planning commission. In spite of all the paper that you have in front of you in the staff report packet, the action before you is actually very simple and straightforward. As thoroughly described in the staff report, the staff presentation to you, the choice here is, the map allows for contour grading, which includes 42 lots at the same time as subdivision improvements. It also provides for 47 separate grading permits for the remaining 47 lots. Now, that may have been the position 11 years ago when the map was approved, that those, that number of grading permits was appropriate, given that it was going to be a custom home subdivision and based on the information you had before you. But there is no way the county, given your current practice on maps over the last number of years, would require nearly 50 grading plans to be reviewed by your staff. The project now will be comprised of semi-custom homes built by one builder in one phase. What you have before you in the map modification is, as staff thoroughly described, pad grading of 100 foot by 140 feet on each of those 47 lots at the same time as subdivision improvements and the contour grading. So you have one grading at one time rather than over a period of years. So less traffic, less noise, less dust over an extended period of time. Again, the original proposal of the, on the map that was approved in 2010 assumed on those 47 lots and actually on all lots, that all grading would take place from setback line to setback line. But the idea with the proposal before you is really to try to preserve as many oak trees onsite on lots as possible. That is the base objective of the proposal. That's all that's before you today. Either one grading plan with 100 foot by 140 foot pad graded on each of the 47 lots to be graded at the same time as subdivision improvements and contour grading in one comprehensive plan, or 47 separate grading plans. The fair market value of a conservation easement is not before you. Condition 59, mitigation 5.9, states that the, the, that condition, what, by the way, is not being modified by our application, requires, it's a requirement that was approved by the Board of Supervisors, that the value of the conservation easement be determined at the time of tentative map approval in 2010. That condition was satisfied. There is no intention language or anything else in the EIR or the mitigation measure that calls for that to be updated. The plain language says you set that, establish that, at the time that the tentative map is approved. That's been complied with. The per-inch fee of $100 per significant oak tree to be removed is also not before you as part of this project. As the staff presentation thoroughly reviewed, that fee was established in 2007. This is a vesting tentative map, which grants the project the vested right to be able to develop under the ordinance's policies and standards, in effect, at the time that the map was approved, including the tree ordinance. If the board wants to change that fee, you can. You're perfectly permitted to do so. You must go out and do a nexus study, that is, a series of notice public hearings, to be able to adopt and substantiate whatever fee level you want to set. You don't get to look at other counties or City of Folsom or City of Sacramento and say, "Go adopt theirs." You don't get to do that. Moreover, of the oak woodland and significant oak tree mitigation that is set forth in the EIR and set forth in Condition 59, again totaling just over $590,000, all that has been paid for the entire project, including the 47 lots. We were proceeding with contour grading and subdivision improvements. That requires a payment, it was roughly almost half of what the fees for oak woodland mitigation and for significant oak tree removal was, in terms of the contour grading. And since it was already half, and we thought we'd be starting with the balance of that in August, September, the decision was made, simply pay it, get it done, and move forward so that the county wasn't trying to keep track of multiple checks for multiple lots as the project was developed. Again, as the staff report described and in the staff presentation, the EIR and Condition 59 overestimated the impacts of what the project would actually be. 100% of significant oak trees on lots were assumed to be removed. Of the 81 oak woodland acres on the site, 100% basically was analyzed and assumed to be removed. That's not what you have before you. One with the 100 by 140 foot pad that we're proposing on the 47 lots, the entire intent of that is to try to save as many trees on the site, both from the property owner's perspective and the builder's perspective. As for oak woodland, again, while 100% was assumed, that figure in the EIR that was shown in the presentation and in your staff report of the 17.55 acres, that was for subdivision improvements and wetlands fill. And you know that because you go to the next figure in the EIR, and it shows exactly that acreage, which magically shows up as 17.55 acres. But again, the EIR assumed basically 100% of all oak woodland on the site was to be removed. However, the project before you, as we proposed to modify with the tentative map, out of the roughly 80 acres, 54 acres is being removed. Two-thirds of all the oak woodland on the site. In terms of blue oak woodland, which was, has at all times been seen as more valuable oak woodland on the site, only 50% is being removed. 50% is being preserved on the site. The map amendment before you, again, simply affects the timing, the processing, and the extent of grading on those 47 lots. That's it. So the desire for the ability to protect more oak trees on the site, and again, being able to look at that in one grading plan at one time rather than 47 separate grading plans is the only decision before you today. If you were to deny the application today and grant the appeal, we will submit 47 separate grading plans. That's what will happen starting tomorrow. And we will be able to grade, again, looking at the site that we've already assumed and paid for the mitigation, for the impacts between setback lines. That's not our preference. We want to do this in a way that helps preserve more trees on those 47 lots. With that, we ask you to deny the appeal and approve the project and the map modification before you as recommended by your staff and unanimously approved by the planning commission. Mr. Chairman, that's my presentation. I don't know if you want me to respond to anything that came up in the appellant's argument. There were some comments made that I can't address if you wish me to.
You could do that now or at the end. You always, applicant always has a opportunity to offer up their perspective as it relates to what might be honest differences of opinion, so I'll leave that to you, Marcus.
There were comments that were submitted regarding, you know, that the intent of Condition 59 was to have always those values and fees updated. Again, you have to look at the plain language. Condition 84, which covers traffic fees, includes this sentence. "The actual fees will be those, will be those in effect at the time the payment occurs." So you pull a building permit, that's when you pay them. For the Dry Creek watershed fee, Condition 85, "The actual fee," the last sentence, "the actual fee shall be that in effect at the time the project occurs." Condition 59 says you set the conservation easement, again, the board approved that condition, at the time a tentative map approval. There's no other intent. You can read into that. That's what it said. It set the fee at $100 per inch, according to your ordinance. The ordinance does not provide for escalation, nor did the condition of approval, nor did the mitigation measure. It's just plain language that's there on that. There was a comment regarding the survey, that some of the construction started during nesting season. And we did the surveys, those have been submitted to staff, and during the time that nests were occupied, we had a buffer that was set forth, particularly in the southwest corner, there were no nests found in the eastern portion. We had a biologist onsite every day, because they had to determine at what time all the fledglings had left, and the nests were no longer occupied. The surveys were done. Again, this was extensive surveys. The surveys included plant surveys, trying to look at my notes here. There were plant surveys, focused special status plant surveys, burrowing owl, nesting bird, western pond turtle, western spade foot toad surveys that were done, pre-construction nesting bird and raptor surveys. There was valley elderberry, longhorn bush survey, and invertebrate surveys. Everything was done, according to the rules of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So all those surveys were done in compliance with both the conditions and federal and state law. There was a question regarding the trees. Why was a construction allowed to occur while the appeal was filed? Because the appeal in this map modification before you applies to 47 lots. It does not apply to the contour grading. We have approved improvement plans, we have a grading permit for that, but the application before you does not affect them. So they can proceed according to county approvals. As to the addendum issues, the addendum was specifically done to be able to address things like energy usage, wildland, fire hazard, vehicle miles traveled, those kind of issues that were not reviewed at the time of 2010 map approval. That's why you do an addendum to an EIR. There was a letter submitted talking about this violates Citizens for a Better Environment case from 1998 with the Court of Appeal decision in 2002 relative that we're violating tiering requirements. Well, tiering refers to when you adopt a plan, program, ordinance, and then a subsequent project comes through and tiers off that. Think of a general plan EIR. Think of a community plan EIR that's at a program level, and then a project comes in afterwards and tiers off this. There's only one problem. We're not tiering. We're doing an addendum, which is called for in sequo, and an addendum was done. There were no greater significant impacts found, nor new significant impacts, and that's why you use that. Let's see, surveys. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman, unless any of the board members have questions.
I have a question. EJ, you were wanting the applicant to respond to that early question, and Diddy and/or do you have a follow-up with that?
Yeah, if we want to address the actual construction compliance issues that are going on onsite today, is that what you're referring to?
Yep.
Yeah, we were notified as applicants aware that, you know, on three of the lots that are subject to this appeal, there was tree cutting that occurred. That tree cutting was not shown on the approved improvement plan, so we see that as unauthorized. I do understand that, you know, all operations ceased, and as of today, they should still be ceased operations. But yeah, if Mr. Laduka wants to respond to that as far as the reasoning or basis for that tree cutting, and then any questions other than that, I can respond to as well.
Yep. Marcus.
Can we have a site plan of the project shown?
Oh, we have that remote.
You don't want me to touch this. I'll shut down your whole system.
You like that or the site?
I need the lots, the map that shows the lots.
So we can, there's a laser pointer on this one too, Marcus.
Oh, okay.
Top button.
Top button. So lots over there.
Yep.
Where is the, oh, there it is.
There it is.
Lots are 31, 32, and 33. With the subdivision improvements, which are this roadway, that, frontage improvements of a large berm on which the wall will sit, and then a roughly 90-foot bridge required by the Corps of Engineers over the wetlands area for lot 33 right here. In order to place, including the cranes, we thought that we had the ability to remove some understory. They were not significant trees, they were understory right here, to be able to put the crane that would drop in the panels for the bridge. As we look here, there's drainage areas that have to be removed, and then there's some issues here with the berm. The berm is a very large berm. You have to step back from that in order to build it. And we thought because it was understory, not significant trees, that that was the issue. We apparently were mistaken. We apologized for that, but we thought, given the subdivision improvements and that this was understory, that we had the ability to do that. In this area, you can't build the bridge that's part of the subdivision improvements and required by the Corps without having a place to put the crane, and it's got to go there.
But there is, or I guess, is there a concurrence that that would extend beyond the 47 lots for which this discussion is all about, and that in current, there is a cease and desist, and you're all going to wait until we resolve all of this before-
There isn't a stop or quarter on the project.
No, I know that.
The, the, we, when we were, when it was brought to our attention relative to those three areas right here, relative, because there is a setback area you can go as part of the subdivision improvements. You don't, you aren't limited to the road right away. There's, on either side of that road, either side of the frontage improvements, you have the ability to go onto that site. the ability to go onto that site. That was not, in terms of the drainage ditch there is along Olive Ranch Road, you had to be setback on either side of that. And so that's where the trees were removed as part of the understory. We understand that we shouldn't have done that, should have asked. We do have meetings with county every week, so it was not raised. It was raised late last week, and so we immediately, the property owner stopped all activity on the site.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions, comments by board members at this point?
Well, I just, I want to ask, this is more for staff, so I wanted to understand, do we have validation? This was only understory, and it was only in those areas?
That is what was confirmed by our inspectors as of, I think, last Thursday morning. Those three lots, there's a total of thirty-eight significant trees on those lots. And I don't know exactly how many have been cut or impacted. The number that the inspector came up with was around twenty or so trees. Some of those twenty might have been located within, you know, the proposed building pads, but that, those building pads aren't yet authorized or approved by your board. So, you know, some of those may eventually be approved to come out. We just don't know exactly where they're at, where, we'll have to go out there to look at what exactly was removed, where they're located, whether in the setback area or actually within the building envelope area, within the setbacks, to determine that number. They're significant trees, because we would be looking at the number of inches. You know, if the board decided to move forward to assess a fine for that tree removal, you certainly can do that. It's in our code, chapter nineteen, up to three times the value of the current value of a replacement tree. So that's an option for the board regarding that.
To answer the...
So I was, it was described as understory. Now you're saying twenty of thirty-eight significant trees. I'm not, maybe I'm...
Yeah, up to twenty trees that were, that were cut.
Cut.
So, like I said, I think I need, you know, our...
Yeah.
Engineering, surveying inspectors to go out there to define what were cut. You know, trees are numbered. We have really good tree exhibits from two thousand and ten that identify all the trees on site, so I think I'm confident our inspectors could determine, you know, what was removed without authorization under these current improvement plans. You know, there's a significant amount of tree removal going on out right there, because they do have the subdivision improvements going in, along with the contour grading on the forty-two lots. There is a whole lot of authorized tree removal out there. If you go out there to the site, which, you know, many of you have been out there, you know, there are piles of removed trees, so, you know, to the public driving by, you know, there's significant tree removal. Most of that is, I'd say the majority of that is authorized. But in this particular instance, there are three lots that, you know, there should not be any tree removal on at this time.
Right, and that's what I was trying to get to, how much was done in the subject areas of the appeal. So that's, your staff still needs time to validate that, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I could...
I would defer to our, you know, engineering survey manager, but I think she would agree with me.
She's nodding behind you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, there's, from what our construction manager tells me, it was fewer than twenty trees. None of them were significant.
None of them are significant.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Suzanne?
Yes, hi. Hi, Marcus.
Hi.
I have a couple of problems, because I understand that with the appeal, construction fences should have gone up around all of the areas that were part of the appeals. Is that correct, EJ?
Yeah, so there are approved improvement plans for this project. On those improvement plans are the locations of where temporary construction fencing should be installed, and during construction, that fencing should be up where it's required.
There was actually, I think, five different types of fences on the property. There was fences around nesting raptors in the southwest corner that was up, and then it was removed when they had all fledged. There is fencing around the wetlands area that is still up. When the initial surveys and the four oh four permit, which took nine years to obtain, was done, there were thirty-three elderberry bushes on the site. One was in the preserve area, which is along Miners Ravine, so it was not affected. Thirty-two were relocated to a preserve and credits purchased. When the biologist went out and resurveyed all hundred and nineteen acres of this site, they found three new elderberry bushes. There are no boreholes indicating the valley elderberry longhorn beetle. Nonetheless, they have fencing around them. The United States Army Corps of Engineers has re-initiated section seven consultation with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service about having those three bushes relocated to a preserve on the site. We expect to have an answer back on that within a week or two. So there is a whole series of fences that have gone up. Some had to be removed as you start building subdivision improvements. And then, over the weekend, we re-put up fencing along all areas. It would have been helpful, because there's been a good deal of vandalism on the site. Some of the oak trees have had their tags pulled, and some have been scratched out, and we had some significant vandalism over the weekend on the site.
Okay, the reason I ask about the fencing is because the fencing is intended to keep those areas noted where no development should be happening. So EJ and I found out about that fact that there was no fencing, and that there were some trees removed in some of the area. When we went over Friday, there were no fences up anywhere to show what areas were supposed to be protected, to include the three lots that you're referring to right there. Now, I did drive by yesterday, and there are some fences up, but still, those three lots are not surrounded. There's fencing all up along the frontage, and then still, well, of course, the fencing on the wetlands. But, so the question still is, if you don't put the fencing up to denote where to protect, you know, how can anybody be sure? I mean, I'm driving a big tractor around, and there's no lines on the dirt. How can you really tell what's what if you don't have the fencing to tell people where not to go?
Well, as you said, fencing has been placed along Olive Ranch Road. It now extends back into the site. So there's more than three lots that are covered by the new fencing.
Right, I understand.
There's all the lots on the western half.
Right, but I'm just saying that in the, in the front. So, at any rate, just to the, to the people who are watching this...
So the fencing goes back along, back up toward the northwest section of the property.
Okay. So my next question really is for county. How often do, does our staff go out and inspect to see that things are done, things are being done appropriately? You know, that the fencing is up and the fencing is down, and also, too, is there a biologist's report that we can actually see that says when the raptors have, the fledglings have left the nest?
So, two-part question. Probably, I'll have two people respond to those. I'll have Rebecca Tabor, who is our deputy manager for engineering survey, respond to the inspection and how that works. I think it would be really critical, just to answer, you know, separate from the construction compliance issue, there were a lot of biological concerns that our appellant brought up, and we do have Helix Consulting here who can respond to that. I think that'd be helpful, just for the public, for the board, just to explain what protocols were in place and what has been done out there, because a significant amount of work to make sure there, you know, was compliance with these conditions has been done. I think that's important to know.
Okay, I'll start this off. Thanks, EJ. Rebecca Tabor, engineering and surveying department, division, I'm sorry, deputy director. To address the construction inspection, I think I would start by saying that it is a team effort. The plans are approved by our division, and then there's a pre-construction meeting, and it's a team effort. There's a planner there, there's the developers' biologist, our inspector runs the meeting, developers present. It's, it's really, you know, a kickoff, and of course, the plans are our instructions for seeing this, this project go to construction. The fencing goes up first, and our inspector is, is there, spot checking. But, but I want to point out that we have three inspectors for the west side of the county, three full-time inspectors. We are not inspecting full-time. We just can't. There's six projects currently active in Granite Bay, so our inspector will spot check. And quite honestly, our priority is to be there during the construction of public improvements. Work in the county right of way, public sewer, public roadways. So, so we're really spot checking and relying on the developers' biologist to check the location of fencing, confirm that all of the surveys have been completed, provide that information to the county staff, you know, planning and engineering and surveying. You know, and then we, we know that these things have happened, and we allow, you know, work to progress. There's weekly meetings, and, you know, like I said, spot, spot checking, and we do respond to complaints and address those, and that, that kind of helps us guide the project construction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So maybe at this time, I'll ask Kirsten Shields with Helix Consulting.
Before, before we go into that part, I just, I have a question about the stop work order. It was my understanding that, that we were going to request a stop work order, but then we did not.
So our agency director did meet with the, is he, I'm not sure. I'll have Mr. Pedretti answer that question.
Steve Pedretti, CDR Director. I went out there last Thursday afternoon, when we became aware that there were some trees were taken out in some of the lots. At that time, the owner said that he would voluntarily stop work, and so there was no need to issue a stop work order. He wanted stop work until today, until the appeal. So there was no need to issue that stop work order. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
I, I may need to ask legal this. Isn't there a purpose for a stop work order as opposed to a voluntary ceasing of work? I mean, there's teeth in a stop work order if anything happens after the stop work order.
Yes, a stop work order does have repercussions if that's violated, and there, there is, I guess, a stronger legal enforcement to a stop work order than a voluntarily stopping of work.
Okay, so in that sense, I think a stop work order would have been appropriate, even, even though they're volunteering.
Yeah, they volunteered. I saw where, in some areas where they could have taken out trees, they, they kept the trees, and there are good reasons for them to do that. It didn't appear, it appeared they were being reasonable overall, and that they, that they were not going to do any work before today, so I felt that I was okay with the stop work, with a voluntary stop work.
Right, okay. Well, in the future, go ahead and move for this stop work order, because I'm a little bit concerned about volunteering. When EJ and I went out on Friday, we were told that it was more or less an honest mistake, because they needed a place to put their heavy equipment when they, in order to prepare for building the bridge. But then in speaking to county council, she was told that the reason they did that because some trees were dead and/or dying. So, right now, I have heard conflicting stories, so hence, I think, a stop work order would preclude all of that from happening. Okay, move on to the biologist's report. Hi, Marcus.
Do you want me to answer that, Mr. Chairman?
I, I think we're good on that.
Okay, because some of the trees were dead or dying, the ones of the fewer than twenty that were removed. Some were dead or dying.
Okay, thanks.
And then now...
So I'd like to call up Kirsten Shields with Helix to speak to the biological component of this project.
Good morning, members of the board, chairman.
Morning.
I'm Kirsten Shields. I'm a regulatory specialist with Helix Environmental Planning. Helix is under contract. We've worked on permitting for the project through the years and are currently under contract to conduct biological surveys, including nesting bird surveys, nesting, nesting bird and raptor surveys. We surveyed for burrowing owls, western pond turtle, and western spade-footed toad. Initially, some in the neighborhood of thirty active nests were mapped on the project site. Helix biologists continued to go out to the site, monitor periodically, weekly. We were going out doing drop-in inspections, updating mapping with the engineering team and the project applicant, and as, as the heat progressed, the nesting activity subsided. We did have the red-shouldered hawks nesting in the southwestern corner of the site. We monitored that nest. Weekly, daily drop-in inspections happened until those young had fledged, and as of July seventh, actually, as of June twenty-ninth, nesting, those, those hawks had fledged, and July seventh, a final nesting bird report was submitted to county staff, clearing the site for construction, and no active nests at that time.
Can you explain to everybody, I know I didn't realize this, and I'm sure a lot of laypeople don't realize this. What is it that allows you to determine that the nests are no longer active, and that it's okay to remove the nest?
So, we, the Helix biologist, it's, the threshold is when the chicks fledge. And at this point, the, you know, we had observed those hawks, and the progression of the chicks in the nest, from being in the nest to hopping around from tree to tree, and at one point, the pair was actually observed trying to get the chicks off the nest by taking food and jumping to adjacent trees, luring those babies out of the nest. The babies were seen flying, and once they're, once they fledged, they're flying and feeding on their own, then that nest is no longer considered active.
Okay, and even if the bird returns and flies around like it's checking out what you're doing around its nest, that's still okay, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Do birds typically reuse a nest?
It depends on the species.
Okay.
And with the heat that we've seen and the progression, you know, so the onset of the heat, we've seen nesting activity, not just on the project site, but in a number of sites throughout Northern California, nesting activity has really been shut down because of the heat we've experienced, so...
And so your biologists do an actual physical report with all of this information?
With the surveys, yeah.
Okay, great.
Survey results, sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't see any. Thank you. Okay, now we'll open it up to the public, and anyone from the public can have three minutes to address the board on this issue, and just come forward and state your name for the record.
I do have handouts here, if you'd like. These were sent by email, too, so. My name's Cheryl Langley. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to impact, to, to discuss this third-party appeal. The Rancho del Oro Estates project will seriously impact oak woodland. I submitted comments that not only describe the importance of oak woodlands, but I hope convey the sense of a woodland's fragility, too. A mature oak woodland is nearly impossible to replace once removed. Yes, trees can be planted and trees grow, but a mature oak woodland, once lost, will take decades to replace. Large blue oaks, for instance, are likely a hundred and fifty to four hundred years old, and successful replacement of an oak woodland assumes replacement is done in a manner scaled to achieve the complexity and diversity of established native habitat. Where has this been accomplished? This project has now been altered to the degree that it's reasonable and necessary, really, to circulate a supplemental EIR. This would give board members and the public the opportunity to evaluate the revised project and revisit and adjust mitigation measures and impact fees. You now have the opportunity to require supplemental environmental review. That door has been opened. A new approval is required, and mitigation measures need to be reevaluated. Blaster County's oak woodland conservation easement and significant tree fees need to be updated to support woodland habitat mitigation that is efficacious. I think we all agree, mitigation needs to be effective to be mitigation. It is doubtful, given the low level of fees now assessed under this project, that those fees could produce a desired result. They simply are not adequate. For oaks that cannot be retained on the project site, the most effective mitigation option is the purchase and preservation of land in the project area that supports woodland of comparable habitat value. For this project, this would entail purchase of properties in Granite Bay, an expensive option to be sure, but one that ensures the area retains its character, it ensures property values remain stable, and protects the resident wildlife. Mitigation fees need to be increased to enable acquisition of these suburban properties. In fact, purchase of land across the county, in both rural and suburban areas, is necessary to protect rare and endangered species whose distribution is tied to... to protect rare and endangered species whose distribution is tied to specific areas. The same is true when it comes to the protection of wildlife corridors. In conclusion, the planning commission's approval of the subdivision map modification for this project should not be supported by the board, and a supplemental EIR should be circulated to evaluate oak woodland and significant tree impacts and associated mitigation. You have both the authority and the opportunity to do so. I urge you to take that step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jane Nagri. Now I have so many notes, I can't even read what I was going to say. First of all, I want you to know, I live directly across from the property. I have been watching all the tree removal. The tree removal started a long time ago. I can go home and look on my map, but it was going on in May, and I know it was probably in that protected area, the frontage. But that lot, I believe it's 34 on the other side of the road. It has all the trees removed from it except for two oaks. They have blue tags on them. I don't know what that means. But there were a lot of substantial oak trees there. The other tree, the other lot on the other side that they talked about, the under-story, also had nice oak trees. They are all gone. And this was after the appeal. I wrote to the county right after Amber filed her appeal and said, "There is work going on, and it needs to be, I'm shocked, and it needs to be stopped." And nothing happened. They were still there, let's see, today is Monday. I believe Saturday I saw people there. They weren't cutting, but a giant oak tree on the side of Lot 34 was cut in the last week. So I am shocked to hear that there wasn't a stop-work order. And I'm also shocked to hear that the appeal was filed and the applicant paid the fee after that. Obviously, they knew there was something wrong, something coming. We cannot do business with a 10, 20-year-old fee schedule or pre-mitigation schedule. We need to get that updated. There is nothing in the plan that says you cannot update the tree fees. We are losing thousands and thousands of dollars on this project because of this. Not to say how many oak woodlands we're living, we're losing. The people on my street, all of Ranch Road, have protested this all the way through. Now, they don't even know this is happening. I can't walk up and down the street anymore and tell them. They are going to be shocked at the amount of oak trees that are being removed. That's our clean air, and then we're going to add the car admissions coming in. And there are still birds circling those trees out there, and I see them, and they're missing their nests. So I would ask today, I have much more to say, but I will stop right there, please support this appeal. This is an unfinished business. Do not just slap a yes on it and let it go by. I pray that you would support the appeal. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Chairman Wygant and board members. My name is Stan Nader. I'm a resident of the city of Lincoln. I'm before you today to request that you uphold this appeal. I believe this project requires more due diligence before you granted any additional approvals. Most of the information that the planning commission deliberated on is dated. As an example, the tree survey was done 10 years ago, and some of the trees could now be listed in a significant category. Also, it's been observed that there was a red-tailed hawk circling where a tree had recently been removed, indicating that the nest may have still been in active use and would call into, potentially call into question the nesting survey. Besides this, what I'm sharing with you, you may be asking, why is Stan Nader up here before this hearing? Our family have farmed in Placer County north of Lincoln for 150 years. What's now known as Raccoon Creek goes through the middle, went through the middle of our ranch. Many of the oak trees were populated along the creek, many of them large ones. We even had one we called Centennial Tree because it was well over 150 years old. So we took care and respected the oak trees. And my grandfather and my father taught me, you treat the land and its inhabitants with respect and care, and it will treat you back with that same respect. Oak trees in California have a long and storied past. The native people collected acorns was their main food source. If you walked amongst the foothills, you would see the grinding rocks with the holes in them where the Indians prepared the, or acorns for their meal. And the Indian, the native people would use the oak trees for, to tell a change in the seasons. So I believe it's important that we recognize how critical the oak trees are to our ecosystem. And I would ask that you, again, support this appeal. Thank you.
Thanks, Stan.
Hello, my name's Dorothy Kingsley, and I'm a resident of Granite Bay. I kind of have a little bit more practical approach to this opposition. I'm offering my comments today regarding fire insurance. Since this development was first proposed and initially approved, the risk of wildlife, wildfire statewide in Placer County and certainly in Granite Bay has increased dramatically. Within the past two years, the availability of fire insurance in Granite Bay has decreased as the wildfire risk has increased. Almost every one of our neighbors has lost their fire insurance, and they've had to seek other coverage. We were with Nationwide, and they certainly were not on our side. They dropped us, and we were forced to go to a fire insurance that cost two and a half times more than we were initially paying. Many of our neighbors had to go on to the California Fair Plan, which I understand has recently been improved. But right now, their coverage is minimal, and their, the price they're paying is extreme. We live in constant danger of having to find other insurance, losing our present insurance. And the rules that the insurance companies have come up with would almost insist that you clear-cut your property. They do not want any branches of any two trees to be within eight feet of each other. So no matter what you say here about maintaining the oak woodlands, the insurance companies and mortgage companies, you need insurance to have a mortgage, they will insist that the oak woodlands be completely destroyed. So right now, my concern is that also with all the wildfires we have to the north of us, and that should there be a wildfire in our, in Granite Bay, that we don't have the resources to defend the existing homes, much less hundreds of more homes. And I don't think that there's been enough mitigation to improve the quality of the fire services that we have. And so because of this, I would hope that the county would not, that would reconsider the approval for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Verkema, I have about 25 years as a resident in Granite Bay. I find it interesting that we just celebrated the ceremony of the PCCP, and we're talking about mass grading. Mass grading is a draconian concept. We cannot afford in this day and age with sustainability and climate change to have these types of discussions. I'd like to go back to Mr. Laduka's straight and forward language. In 2010, three actions happened with the, with the hearing. One was the denial of Granite Bay Community Association's request to try and keep the footprint smaller, less homes. The second one was the denial of Marcus Laduka's appeal on behalf of the applicant to have the gated entry features and what actually has happened since then. And then the certification of the final environmental impact report, there was a significant and unavoidable impact. That impact was mitigated by a findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations. There's an attachment F in your package. So with that, with that, it stated that luxury homes would be built. These were the project features that were being requested, luxury homes and less grading. I would suggest that the facts and findings have been systematically removed by the applicant. So the original project does no longer meets those objectives. Since it does not meet those objectives, I would request that you do a supplemental EIR and that the environmental objectives in the report actually contain that. In addition, when the fees were looked at in the addendum, the addendum looked at VMT, it did not look at affordable housing. We have an emergency situation with affordable housing. Those fees that were just approved by Placer County should be applied to this project because, just like VMT, there are now county and state regulations that should require that. In terms of the mitigation fees, there is a lawsuit mentioned here in El Dorado County. Mr. Pedretti came from El Dorado County. The lawsuit was based upon a lot of the projects that were put in for oak woodlands being removed. Mr. Pedretti's been here five years almost, four and a half years, and these fees have been kept artificially low. We've had white hawks, which is about 1,000 oak trees removed here, 4,000, a bevy of little projects that when you add those up, it's probably over 6,000 trees now that are artificially being mitigated. I would hope that you support the Amber's appeal and that you look at those mitigation fees, get a supplemental EIR, and especially look into the facts and findings because they are no longer, they don't exist, systematically removed. It's not okay to be able to just write a check and pay your way out of it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience supposed to address the project?
Hi, Phil Russ, 30-plus years in Granite Bay, and thank you all for representing citizens over that time. First of all, I was surprised to hear, it seems to me that there's, the county protocols seem to be somewhat lax in handshake-type of agreements like the stop, things like that. Decisions being made by county resources that should be made by legal. I know in my business, that would not be a good thing for me. I heard assumed, and we thought, by the developer, and I think we need to have the county look at that tree survey to see what actually took place, rather than assume and think what was going on with that. Let's see. I also heard about not enough resources to monitor. Again, places that I know, when they build something, or, you know, when you build something as a manufacturer or something like that, you don't start a project that you can't quality check. Think about sending someone to the moon and not doing quality checks on those things. We're not talking about that here, but it is important to people who live in Granite Bay. That's why they're here. And so I think we need to either throttle back what we're doing, or we need to step up what we're doing as far as checks and making sure that people are abiding by things. I heard about daily meetings with county resources. If there's daily meetings, I would expect there to be daily notes. So I'll be asking for those, because hopefully there were discussions about what was taking place and what wasn't taking place, if there was meetings were in fact there. Modifications. So I heard the word modification, we're just modifying. Again, when I go to do a contract, if I'm making a minor change, that exposes me to have the entire contract reevaluated. I support what Amber had brought up about looking at the tree mitigation fees or the numbers, and looking at that in today's view. I know my life is different today than it was 10 years ago. Economy is different than it was 10 years ago. And here we're going with things updated, with the exception of natural resources, which are irreplaceable. And as Amber pointed out, we have learned a lot as a community in the last 10 years about natural resources. The thing about the individual permits versus mass grading, I think that's a decision that the county and the citizens need to make. Do they want each one evaluated on its own merit, or mass grading like what is being described? Personally, I prefer to see each as they come up. Again, things change over time. We also heard about the fire insurance type things. So by just mass grading, we're approving something that we don't know for the future. So anyway, in closing, thanks again, and I hope that you uphold the appeal.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to?
Jean, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of the Redbud Chapter of the California Native Plant Society. My understanding is that, speaking on behalf of an organization, I have additional time. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
No, you'll get three minutes.
All right. Our organization is a nonprofit environmental organization with over 10,000 members, and we have over 400 members in the local Redbud Chapter, which represents Western Nevada and Placer Counties. We have concerns about this modification, which we believe, as several speakers have stated, should trigger a, an updated, excuse me, a review of the EIR and an updated, with updated surveys and analysis of the mitigation. When, since 2010, when the EIR was written, California has faced several years of severe drought, with 2021 being the most extreme in the century. Moreover, the extreme heat, violent weather, and massive fires of recent years demonstrate dramatically the accelerating pace of climate change, which must be taken into account in evaluating biological resources. We ignore this reality at our peril. Blue oak woodlands are critical components of our local natural flora, and the native plant communities are essential to healthy watersheds and effective wildlife corridors. They are also essential to sustaining California's unique biodiversity. The blue oak woodlands found at the side of the Rancho del Oro project encompass intact, functioning native plant communities that are essential to both wildlife corridors and other critical ecosystem services provided by healthy watersheds. These watersheds feed and sustain our streams and rivers, communities, and farms. In the midst of pervasive development, the particular project is issued, that parcel is one of the few remaining areas contiguous native plant communities, and it is a real concern to see it destroyed. As noted by the Environmental Protection Agency, healthy watersheds provide critical ecosystem services, including nutrient cycling, carbon storage, erosion and sedimentation control, increased biodiversity, soil formation, wildlife movement, water storage, filtration, and flood control. It is native trees, grasses, and shrubs that provide the habitat, wildlife, that cycle nutrients, form soil, et cetera. And if we allow them to be fragmented and destroyed, we are losing something that cannot be replaced. I would urge you to reconsider this appeal and to approve a decision to reevaluate the mitigation fees and the change in grading practice. mitigation fees and the change in grading practices. Thank you.
Marilyn, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Marilyn Jasper, Public Interest Coalition. We have concerns in addition to those submitted in our written comments. Contrary to the addendum, the addendum's conclusions, the modifications, especially in preliminary grading plan, will indeed increase significant environmental impacts and will be detrimental to homeowners with regard to extreme heat, future energy uses and water shortages. Preliminary clear cutting or clearing negates the originally approved custom lot grading. If custom designed homes are built, they may require additional grading or not, as each home's designs' features will dictate on this project's naturally occurring terrain variations or contours, if you will. At a time when housing markets have brought huge economic gains to many, now this development wants to waive conditions to exempt the project from requirements that would not only prevent environmental degradation, but also provide established and welcome shade to future home buyers and, and they require little or no water. Instead of lots, parcel lots with oak trees and their built-in shade and drought tolerant adaptations, the modified grading, the clearing, will be followed by planting of ornamental or other stick trees that will require a great deal of water. I'm talking about the lots, not the boundaries. That's, that water is already becoming scarce. Along with very likely future droughts, this project will exacerbate water shortages. In addition to their environmental and biological values, often residential lots, major draw that homeowners want and appreciate are established oaks. They know that oaks can increase the values of their property. So wiping them out ahead of time cannot be justified. We urge you to make responsible decisions, grant the appeal, stick to the original approvals, no grading modifications, and not adopt the addendum. Also, due to what's been mentioned today, requiring a hefty compliance bond or a performance bond on the, with the development should be considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning and thank you everyone for attending. I would like to also ask that there be a new and updated EIR report. No report that is 10 years old can address what we are going through now. The drought we have, as our last speaker spoke about, is becoming worse every year with no real signs that that is going to change. The idea that we are going to keep tearing down heritage oak trees that are anywhere from 100-plus years, they are not replaceable. You cannot put small trees in thinking that somehow within a lifespan of someone living in a home, they're going to have a substantial tree. The, the percentage of the size of those trees that are required is almost nonsensical. To say that we don't have a wildlife corridor through the whole area, I live in a 15-year-old quote-unquote plant community. We have turkeys, opossums, raccoons, skunks and a variety of owls in a full residential area. We have seen the decrease in those animals in the last 10 years and it is heartbreaking, except for of course, our native turkeys. That we have a biologist that is paid by the developer. Why does our county not have a biologist? No offense to the developer, but that biologist is going to always lean in the area towards the developer, not for the overall of our county. Our county has again and again, with the board of supervisors, allowed developments that are slowly destroying why most of us lived here, moved here. I grew up in this area. The changes are, have been appalling with very little consideration to future generations. It is time that we dramatically update our tree fee cost. We're the lowest in the region. We're leaving $500,000 on the table that could pay for upgraded inspectors pay in hours. It is time to move forward. This board has been sitting this way for the last 15 years, going for the developers and not for the local citizens of this community. I ask that it's time that we move forward in a positive way for our community and not always for the developers. Thank you for your time and thank you for the consideration to mitigate some of this, these changes. We've allowed the changes, we can put in some of the changes. Fees and ER report, EIR report have to be updated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Greg, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
This is Greg McGowan. Thank you for your time. Terri Weigart, supervisors, I appreciate it. I'm a biologist, I live in Granite Bay. I was a consulting biologist for more than two decades, largely working for developers in the energy industry. I've got about four things, I'm going to move quickly obviously due to time. I want to start with your agenda. One, item 1A2 is to deny the appeal. That would sure appears that you have predisposed an outcome that has not been made yet. Or if it has been made, maybe staff reached out to the supervisors to get their opinion, that would be a clear violation of the Brown Act. Certainly makes this seem to be a bit of a sham to have that on your agenda. Similarly, I found it disingenuous, disingenuous for the applicant to essentially threaten the board with the approved due process of 47. I'm going to overwhelm you with grading plans. I, I get that it would be overwhelming, but that's what was approved. Number two, for the project, the mitigation for oak impacts is demonstrably inadequate. The county recognized this with the other fees. In terms of vesting, vesting wasn't an issue for the other fees. Maybe county council could weigh in, but the actions explained by the applicant and the actions taken by the county constitute a reopening of the tentative track map that does allow this to be the current timeframe in which those fees should be calibrated. It also makes practical common sense. I, I was troubled by staff's bold, unsubstantiated and inaccurate statements about wildlife corridors as others have said. That certainly reflects, not even reflects the reports for the project that presumably staff has reviewed. I certainly want to echo Supervisor Jones's sentiments. Director Pedretti and Deputy Director Tabor both kind of referred to a team effort here. This meeting is being recorded, you can go back. The applicant, who is reportedly a team member, stated to you today that they did put up all the fences that were needed, but when they got in the way of construction, they took them down. Clearly, they don't understand the concept of the fence and what they're intended to do. When it comes to that illegal grading, you know, whether it's 20 trees or understory, clearly the county has a responsibility to document the actual impacts and to do that sincerely and not take an applicant's word for it, or frankly, staff's word for it, just to get an accurate from a biologist or an arborist. And I want to be sure that the staff, or the supervisors enforce consequences for that illegal grading. You can't say, well, we're going to approve the grading later, so we'll just allow illegal grading to occur. That's completely inappropriate. So I would urge you to update the fees accordingly so that we can affect the mitigation that was intended by the original approval. And again, I thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Chairman, no further public comment.
Okay. With that, then, one clarification I want to make generally for the public here, but also for the public out there. The way our policies work in the county is that staff will review a project and/or a situation like this where there may be modifications for conditions requested. If it has to go to the planning commission, then they will make a recommendation to the commission. If the commission agrees or disagrees with them, that recommendation comes to the board of supervisors. So in other words, in this case, if the planning commission disagreed with staff's recommendation and recommended approval of the appeal, then that would have been the staff recommendation to the board of supervisors. In fact, the planning commission in this case recommended denying the appeal and that is the recommendation that came before us. That's why it was worded the way it was in the agenda. Okay. With that, then I will bring it back to the board for discussion and/or consideration. Suzanne?
I have more, more questions, Robert.
Sure.
First of all, I have a question for EJ. You showed me the other day a map of all the original trees on the parcel and that they're all numbered and were they all noted in that map that whether they were significant or whether they were woodland?
So that exhibit I shared with you is part of an exhibit that was done with the originally certified EIR. The background to that, it included all significant trees and it also included all the oak woodland.
What date do you think that was?
Oh my, probably around 2008. We've had, and we've had updated exhibits since then showing the, you know, with the, I believe even with the 2013 approvals. So, you know, those maps at the time were, were fairly accurate. I think those maps are good enough for us to go back to see what's there now and what's not.
Right. So will you use that map to compare what's been removed? That's a big job, but...
Well, no, we would use all our maps that we have and go out there and we'd work with our ESD staff and confirm what's been removed and any information that the, you know, biologist has on the site as well.
Okay.
And I don't think that's a difficult exercise. I think it's just a timely exercise. That's certainly something we intend to do, given the circumstances of last week.
Right, right. So, I mean, we already know that there were some trees, I'll just say a few because I don't want to, I don't want to say anything more than since I don't know, but since we know that there are a few that were removed, that were not supposed to be removed, I would ask Clayton then, based on that, will you work up penalties for those trees that were not removed under, you quoted it earlier, EJ?
So we, so we do have a, and maybe I should provide a little, a little background and this may address mitigation fees as well, not only penalty fees. So, you know, our tree ordinance used to reside in chapter 17, which is zoning code, with adoption, with your board's adoption of the PCCP, that now resides in chapter 19. So there are, it's, you know, not much change. Greg Ken McKenzie, who is responsible for PCCP could contest to this or not, but there hasn't been a lot of change between when it moved from chapter 17 to chapter 19. But what it is very clear about is, you know, even for tree mitigation, you know, we are, when you talk about $100 an inch, that was a fee that was applied back in 2010, that is not codified in our code. What is, what is codified in our, in the code is current market value. That's what's in there today. So to even answer, you know, the appellant's questions, you know, our code right now is written to look at current market value and I can read it. It's current market value and it's as established by an arborist forester or registered landscape architect of the replacement trees, including cost of installation. So that's how our codes are written now. I think that's, that is current. It's a matter of going out and actually having that work done to determine the fees. So anyway, I hope that answers your question about that part of it. But as far as the penalty fees, there is in section 1950090F, talks about a fine three times the current market value, as I had just explained before. So that is a option. If the, you know, this is obviously tied to the appeal, but also separate from the appeal as well because this is something that, you know, would apply to any project during any time of, during construction. But staff does have a draft condition if you wanted to insert that as part of this action today for those, for those lots. And what we would do is we would go out and determine exactly what, you know, what was cut and, and figure out those numbers accordingly.
Okay. How would we determine current market value?
Just as, as it says, you know, from a, someone registered in that field who can give us that denomination.
When was the last time our tree mitigation fees were updated?
Well, this code's been in place for some time.
I have 2007.
Yeah, so I know over time, Lee Chavez, our environmental coordinator is here. You know, we have applied a higher rate to projects more recently. So she may be able to speak to that if you want to get into that conversation some more, you know.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Lee.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. Lee Chavez, Environmental Coordinator. We have on recent projects updated our rate to $125 per inch. That is based on information received from a certified arborist.
Okay. That still seems low comparatively to some of the other counties.
It's the number that we received, we would have to, yeah, it is low compared to other counties, that is true.
Right. What's the purpose of tree mitigation fees?
The mitigation fees take into account, well, it can depend whether you're going to actually plant a tree or not, whether you're going to purchase mitigation credits. But the idea behind the fee is that it takes into account the cost to purchase a tree, plant the tree, maintain the tree, monitor the tree. So it's not just the cost of the tree, it is the cost of ensuring that that tree is ultimately adequate mitigation for the impact.
Right. But do you think that tree mitigation fees are a little, to provide a little bit of an incentive to developers to protect as many trees as they can? I mean, or are the fees too low to incentivize that kind of conduct? I know it's subjective. Anyway, my, my whole point is that I, I believe that these fees are intended to try to sort of nudge developers to protect as many trees because if it's so inexpensive to just mow them all down and say, pay a fee to have them replanted someplace else, but nobody follows up that they're replanted someplace else or that they're taken care of so that they survive, the whole point just seems moot to me that we're just kind of throwing fees into some pot, but nothing's really happening with them. You know, it's, we mow down a whole bunch of trees that are, I mean, these things take 100 to 400 years to become the size that they are. And so we mow them down and then we have no way to, to do anything to reproduce that anywhere.
And that's why in some cases you'll see ratios that are higher than one to one. So if you remove one tree, you mitigate with two to one or three to one. It's, it's a strategy to disincentivize
Right.
Tree removals.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
You know, I have a question on condition 59.
Sure.
Getting conflicting opinions on what condition 59 allows. Does it allow us to relook at the mitigation fees or on this project?
With respect to the modification?
Correct.
Sure. So 59 had a two-part component, one for oak woodland mitigation and also one for significant oak trees. Those conditions were part of that tentative map approval, so those are locked in assuming there's no modification to the tentative map. But the applicant has brought forth a request to modify the map. So that means as part of that discretionary decision, you, the board also has the authority to then modify whatever conditions are necessary. The one caveat to that is that the board has to modify conditions related to the actual modification. So here you've got 47 lots and the grading for those lots that are at issue in the modification. So as long as the condition modification is tied to that, then the board certainly has authority to do so. I would say with respect to the two mitigation pieces in condition 59, one of them is a project-wide woodland, oak woodland mitigation. That one is probably stronger, it's tied stronger to the original project approval. So that one, there might be issues with respect to modifying that since it was tied to the total project approval. But the significant oak tree mitigation, that was tied to per inch and you could certainly impose a different condition with respect to those 47. condition with respect to those 47 lots and significant oak trees that are on those 47 lots, if there was an interest in doing so.
Okay.
And if I could just go back to, you had mentioned a question earlier to me, and I just wanted to provide a response.
Okay.
If in fact, there is a violation of the county code, that would go through code enforcement, and code enforcement certainly does have authority to impose fines as a result. With respect to that condition that's in the tree, the woodland conservation section in Chapter 19, applies for triple fines. There's some questions whether that would be applicable. We'd have to look at that to see if that would be applicable here, because in that section, it does talk about trees designated to be saved by the county. And here, the original approvals indicated that those trees would be removed, but subject to an improvement plan, and that improvement plan hasn't been approved. So there's some questions, the applicability of that, but a fine could be imposed if code enforcement deemed it warranted.
But there are some trees in that project, though, that are not slated for removal, that they've tagged them with blue tags, I believe, the ones that are supposed to be saved. So those that were slated to be saved, if they were taken down, then could be subject to that.
If part of the original approvals, they were slated to be saved, then yes, then that, that would be an issue. But my understanding here is that the original approvals anticipated that all of the oak trees would be removed. And I apologize, I'm not as familiar with those original approvals and which trees are slated to be removed or not, so I defer to staff on that.
Okay.
Maybe I can add some clarification here. I think what it would amount to is, and again, the, any kind of enforcement is separate apart from the approval. Yes, it came up and it was brought to the attention of everyone, that there may be an enforcement issue, and that should be dealt with separately. Staff should be directed, if the boards who chooses, to look at what the original tree surveys were, identify which trees were to be saved, which ones weren't, is my understanding. But I could be wrong, that certain trees that were not on the improvement plans were taken down, and that's what subsection F deals with. And that particular provision, in terms of enforcement, is fully applicable to this project, if it's found in staff's review of the surveys versus the improvement plans, that in fact, trees were taken out that shouldn't have been taken out. The other thing I wanted to point out, too, and this is tearing off of what Clayton was mentioning in terms of modifications to the conditions, and I completely agree with his analysis in terms of, the per inch is something that certainly the board can look at. And I would point out that there is nothing in a vesting tentative map that prohibits the board from doing so and identifying the fair market value of that, of that tree mitigation. You know, I'd point out that the applicant didn't object to the increase of the other fees. So therefore, I'd say the analysis that you can't suddenly increase the fees is absolutely incorrect. And that's supported by the Kaufman case, is sort of supported by the North Maria Eddy case, that says basically, with a vesting tentative map, you can't apply new programs, new regulations, new ordinances, once that vesting tentative map is approved. But it says nothing about the fact that you can't update, for example, a fee that is attached to that program that was in place at the time that the map was approved.
Thank you, thank you for that.
So,
Yes.
if I could, just to provide some, kind of a broader clarification about when, because I was, I was a planner when this project was approved back in 2010. And there was a lot of concern about miners' ravine and protection of miners' ravine. There were considerable amount of oak woodlands on the site of different varieties, some that were incredibly low quality, and then some that were very high quality. And so the, there was a lot of concert, conversation that went into that. And hopefully I don't lose my train of thought here of where I was going with this. But the oak, oak trees, and I am losing my thought, which isn't going to be helpful to any of you. But the oak trees,
Let me see.
And I got my thought back. Sorry about that. That's what happens when you sit here this long. And you've been working on this for well over 10 years.
Gets worse, EJ, don't, don't worry. Hope you didn't lose your thought.
So when this project was evaluated, at the time, for the majority of projects, for oak tree mitigation, we were looking at significant trees, right? The significant trees, or, or, let me clarify even further. We were looking at individual trees and inches of tree. We were not looking at oak woodland prior to this project. You know, there's a lot of state law that came about just prior to and around this time, and even after this time, regarding the protection of oak woodland. So when we analyzed this project, we looked specifically at, you know, the oak woodland component and, and significant trees. We had not done that before. We had not looked at both. And so we were trying to come up with a way to adequately mitigate for both. So from going to a, a project review in the past of where we would only look at individual trees, and, you know, if you look at the trees on site, trying to figure out what the inches of those trees of the different types of oak woodland, that's, that's very difficult to do. So we took an approach to look at the oak woodlands, which has a habitat component to it, which we wanted to address and mitigate for. At the same time, we were aware that there were significant trees, those are trees 24 inches or greater, that, you know, we wanted to retain as many of those as possible. But, you know, because this is a residential, residential, residential single-family zone district, and, you know, it was built under, according to the general plan, this was not a general plan amendment, it was meant to be built as a single-family subdivision, we have to account for that and mitigate for that. So we took a two-pronged approach to, to mitigate for the oak woodlands on site and also the significant trees on site. What makes this project even more unique is because it's a custom lot subdivision, you know, the builder did not come to us with specific building envelopes on each lot, as far as what would, you know, where these actual home sites would be. These are one-acre lots, these are large lots, you know, and that was to be compatible with surrounding properties in the Granite Bay. So in looking at that, you know, they did, we, they ended up, the EIR assumed, looking at the buildable area of those lots, which was within the setback areas. And so they assumed, for EIR purposes, that all significant trees would be impacted. We know that the builder, developer, it's in their best interest to keep as many significant trees as possible, because that adds value to the property. That was the intent. But in the end, they mitigated for all significant trees on site that would be developed on these lots, including the subdivision improvements. So it was an overmitigation, you know, there's 55 acres of impact with the oak woodland. So you have that remaining that is not going to be impacted. You have a significant, you have over 20 acres of, or about 20 acres of preserved open space corridors that are also protected, which was very important to not only the community, but to the site. So the oak woodland component was overmitigated for, and the significant trees were over, you know, overmitigated for. I was out on the site with Supervisor Jones and the, you know, and the developer on Friday. The limited area, we looked at the site, there's already trees that are marked in blue to be retained. And you can tell, these are the, you know, larger, nicer specimen trees that they're trying to retain. So anyway, so that's kind of the, the background. Today, you know, we have the adopted PCCP. It's not an apples and apples comparison of looking at just oak tree mitigation and PCCP conversion fees. I'm not the expert on this, Greg is, and he's here. But I'm not sure we have to go into that, but it's a different fee that they're paying for PCCP. It looks at something totally more comprehensive. So as Karen said, the board does have the option on these 47 lots to impose whatever that current market value fee is. We, as staff, have a condition that we could read into the record later, if it's so, if it's the board's desire to do so. We would look at the difference between that $100 an inch and what that current market value is. So that is an option. Staff is not recommending that, because this, this project already overmitigated for tree impact. So anyway, that was not meant to be a persuasive discussion there, but more factual of the history of the project.
Okay, well, I'm going to take it in a slightly different direction, and I'm going to need Clayton to tell me, what's the difference between EIR, an addendum to an EIR, or a subsequent EIR, and what triggers either?
Yeah, so an addendum to the EIR means that there has been changes since the original EIR, but none of those provided, none of those were significant changes that would warrant a more extensive analysis. And so addendum to EIR is basically the, when you have minor changes to the project, but nothing that triggers any additional environmental analysis. And then the next tier up from that would be a supplemental EIR, which basically you have changes then that have more of a significant impact. And then you could have a subsequent EIR, which is a tier above the supplemental EIR. And this all depends on basically the significance of those environmental changes that you're looking at. And if you have a change that is quite significant, then, yeah, the subsequent EIR would be the most comprehensive document.
Okay, so this is a little blurb I, I read. Under Seca Section 1516-2, when an EIR has been certified for a project, no subsequent EIR shall be prepared for the project unless the lead agency determines, on the basis of substantial evidence in the light of the whole record, one or more of the following. That new information of substantial importance, which was not known and could not have been known with the exercise of reasonable diligence at the time the previous EIR was certified as complete, shows any of the following. Significant effects previously examined will be substantially more severe than shown in the previous EIR. So with the 21, this most recent proposal that they brought to the planning commission, that constituted a, it says, it says in my flyer that in 2010, 2013, it was a tentative map modification, but in 2021, it just says proposed map modification. But wasn't this still the same? It's, it's a map modification? Because now they wanted to change from, well, not they wanted to, it just, it was, served their purpose to change from the individual lots being developed by buyers to then do pad grading overall. So, so at the first round, when they planned to do individual lots, then those lots, it would be up to the people buying the lot to mitigate the trees on that lot. So now, if they're going to do pad grading, they're basically going to have to come in and take those trees that an individual buyer may have preserved originally to do this pad grading throughout the subdivision. So therefore, that means that way back when, when they didn't really consider the loss of all those trees, it wasn't known, couldn't have been known, but now that they've made this map modification, it is known and it's going to be substantial, because now, in addition to more trees, will just logically have to be removed. This is 11 years later, so what's the significance of those trees now as opposed to 11 years ago?
So Clayton, I'll let you answer the legal side of that.
Right.
But just, just to clarify, when currently under the existing approvals, without this modification, the, the developer would need to submit an individual grading permit and building permit for each lot, whenever that custom home builder came in. So when they would do that, staff would review that, our development and review committee, you know, which is made up of our engineering department, planning department, and so forth. We would review that for, you know, exact location of that lot and see if we could minimize, you know, as much as the, you know, tree loss as possible. With the proposal at hand, those same, the pad grading that we see now, we would be reviewing that the same way, except it would be on a revised set of improvement plans. And that's really the appeal before the board today, is whether we do one or the other. So we would be looking at the same thing, because at the improvement plan stage, it's much more detailed and refined, the engineering. So we know exactly where that cuts, fills, and the pads would be. So anyway, just to clarify that, and sorry for interrupting, but I'll send it back to Clayton.
No, you're completely accurate, that those 2010 approvals, they didn't know where the houses were going to go, where the lots were going to be. But as part of that approval, what they decided was basically, we have to assume worst-case scenario, which is all the trees are going to be removed. And that's what the environmental review was done in 2010. They assumed everything would be removed, because they didn't know if somebody was going to come in and take half the trees or a third of the trees. So that's the original approval. That's what you have in terms of 2010. So when you look at the addendum on the EIR, you look, is there a significant change from what they originally evaluated in that 2010 EIR? And because originally, they anticipated all the trees were going to be removed, there isn't a change that creates, that creates a significant environmental impact beyond that original EIR. Does that help?
Yeah, it does, but it's still confusing to say that they've overmitigated and assumed that they would take out all the trees. But isn't the case that they've paid mitigation fees on just what we've labeled as significant trees and, and woodlands? Have they paid for every tree to be removed?
Correct.
And then based on, on what we've seen, I mean, the PCCP and other forms, I think they got a pretty good bargain at half the price of the cost to remove trees under PCCP or perhaps any other, even under the current fair market values, would be upwards of $900,000. This seems, so that's where it's confusing to say that they paid for everything, but yet the fees seem very low if they paid to remove every tree.
Yeah, the PCCP analysis is, is, it's, like I said, it's not an apples and apples comparison. So I don't, I don't think that's
Right.
a fair way to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe offering up, I started sending, so I'll finish up my thoughts.
You finish, you finish.
It strikes me that this project came forward as a pivotal, pivotal time change in staff's mind as it related to low woodland mitigation habitat. And I think, for me, one of the values of the appeal is maybe driving post-PCCP, how we think about that. So in Suzanne's words, I think, well, I'm going to back up a little bit farther. So in some settings, some zonings, what I'm about to say probably doesn't fit. So like, if, if areas zone traditional urban four units to the acre, the board has made a decision that in terms of policy, that property's going to get nuked, and it's going to get mass graded, and it's going to look like downtown Roosevelt or Rockland or Lincoln. We made that decision. This is not the case here. This is a planned development zoning of something around a little bit less than one acre, I think. So, so in terms of market incentives and policy, that was a conscious decision, whereby the development, looking at this piece of property and how do I maximize value to me, but comply with all the regulations. So going forward, it strikes me with the PCCP, that one, we do have a condition here, this firm that says, at the time, so there was a conscious decision, at least when the original conditions were written up, that as compared to like most of our public works fees, which say the fee at the time, if there are any modifications, whatever that fee is, we should at least apply that going forward in the future. And I would think that in the notion that with that, then there would be appropriate incentive to build the best project in the vision of policy, which in this case would be, you would want to preserve most of the oak woodland, because it saves you money and also could be an amenity to the project, and it's going to drive down the cost of doing mitigation. And the operative thing that I'm thinking of, that I'm taking all the time to say this, I don't lose my train of thought, is that I think the standard should be the cost of mitigation for oak woodland, as per Amber's research, if the forest is healthy. Because you know that, I think what you were partly saying is that with this property, at the time you reviewed the project, there was a lot of the forest that was not healthy, and so it should have been cleaned up, fuel load reduction, forest treatment, the kind of work that now is also elevated in the county, not here, but especially in our mountains, in light of all of the forest fires we're having now with 150 years' worth of national forest management that really put out fires and let the forest overgrow. And now, as soon as they torch off, they explode like we're experiencing. So at least going forward, I think, you know, if you were looking at this project today, it would be in the context, what would it cost to preserve, mitigate for this property in a healthy forest setting? So if we were to offset mitigation by doing a conservation easement, like our approach at Hidden Falls Park, where we're trying to manage those forests so that they do not get overgrown for get overgrown for a range of reasons, then that, because it's going to drive up the cost of the conservation, you just don't go buy property some there and are conservation easement, not worry about it, you have to manage it. And that management cost should be included in that, in that conservation easement. So with that, then, I will be quiet and turn it over to Cindy, and then let Jim talk, and then Suzanne, I'll come back to you.
So I, I was going to make the same point you are, Robert, that it is, I think, Amber, thank you, and for all the public, thank you for pointing out that this fee does need to be increased and looked at very seriously, given what we know today. And moving forward, it is not adequate from anything I've been shown, and I understand the constraints on what has already been accepted, where we have flexibility to enact a higher fee, I would support. Secondly, I think the public has been really concerned about the grading and the change in the grading plans. And I've had tremendous amount of work in public works, and so I have maybe more knowledge than some of the public, that grading at one time would actually reduce impacts, because you have less mobilization, less vehicles coming in and out after, afterwards, and trying to undertake it with the constraint that they follow the rules. And now I will say, on the other hand, I also have a lot of experience with improvement plans. And when you're building a 90-foot bridge, I don't care, there should have been on the improvement plans, and any tree removal done outside the improvement plan should have been caught. So I'm going to say both of those items, that, that's no excuse for why, gee, we need to build a bridge. Well, you knew you needed to build a bridge, and you needed to have a mobilization spot for that. So I'm definitely supportive of an enforcement action on this situation. We have to establish credibility with our community, that improvement plans need to be followed. I understand staff can only do spot checks, I understand that, but we, we have to have credibility with our community on every project moving forward. And, and that's unfortunate, that it occurred, for whatever reasons, mistakes do happen on sites often, especially when people are in big equipment, and they think they know where they are, and they may not, or taking down trees. But I do think the grading will be less impactful, but I'd love to hear from, whether it's Rebecca or EJ, on that. Because you, and you planned, in the environmental document, 100% graded lots, and now we're down to a smaller area, correct?
So maybe I'll start that discussion, and if it's, if it's not quite adequate, maybe we'll have other folks jump in. But, you know, originally, custom, this was a custom home lot subdivision. Typically, custom home lots, especially in Granite Bay, we're talking about very large homes. The developer, my understanding, is working with a production builder who does semi-custom homes, which, you know, I think there's a limit to their square footage, five, four, 5,000 square feet. So the advantage for staff, and looking at the grading and coming up with a reduction grading, is, is with these 100 by 140-foot building envelopes, we know what we're getting on each lot. And, and we know that those lots are enough to allow for a 5,000-square-foot home, and the associated driveways to get in there, and garages and so forth. So I think there's, you know, there's advantage of that, doing it all at once, knowing what we're getting. With custom home sites, someone could come in with a, you know, 10,000 or 12,000 square foot home. Not to talk about tree mitigation again, but once these homes are built, there's a, another condition of approval in there that requires a home builder to, if they want to remove a significant tree from their, or any tree from their property, they have to apply for a tree permit. And they will get deemed, or they'll have to pay mitigation, again, it's almost like double mitigation. So once we get to a home-built homeowner in there, they would have to, for any tree to be removed, they would have to come back to the county, and there would be additional mitigation, even though that tree's already been mitigated for. Those are the conditions of approval, that's unique to this project. Anyway, doing the grading back to that, you know, not only, you know, a reduction in grading, but having the grading done all at one time, having all the, you know, since they're out there with all the equipment at one time, the impact on the neighborhood is occurring all at once, instead of years and years and years. You know, there's benefits to emissions, you know, all sorts of things. So I don't know if that answered your question wholly?
It does, and, and I think what is often confusing to the public too, is when you grade one site, it has impacts on another site. And by being able to evaluate all 47, you're not going to have somebody else, the next lot buyer, having to fix what somebody else directed drainage onto their site, now they've got to grade more. You know, so from an environmental standpoint, I think you can be more holistic and systematic in looking and protecting those areas and making sure that doesn't happen as you review grading plans like that, I think.
Yeah, no, I absolutely.
Am I correct, or, you know?
No, I absolutely.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that was like.
I absolutely agree. I mean, knowing, especially knowing driveway locations, drainage is a big deal, the neighbor issues that we're eliminating by looking at it all at once, I mean, that's, you know, that avoids a lot of, you know, controversy, you know, down the road, so.
Because the next owner could come in and say, well, that pushed things onto my property, therefore I need to grade more, and I, it, it's, to me, it's going to be better environmentally. I know the applicant made comment, it'll be easier for review, yeah, but it'll be more holistic in our approach as to what's going to go on, and minimize any grading beyond what's necessary, I think. And I'm seeing nods, will you verify that?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, there was a comment by one of the callers that there was illegal grading. Was there any illegal grading on this property? I, okay, I didn't think so. And I, I have to agree with Supervisor Augustin's comments. It seems to me that if we do what the addendum says, it's a less environmental impact on the property. It creates a buffer, I mean, it prevents issues from neighboring homeowners, as you said. If lot number A does something that'll affect, later on, affect what lot number B wants to do, we are going to have all kinds of conflicts between neighborhoods, the neighbors. And so I really think that, that granting the amendment, or the amendam, is more, is less restrictive as far as environmental damage. And I, I support that. I appreciate all the hard work that Amber, the appellate, has done, really to open up, there has been change, of course, over the last 11 years. I mean, we've had three different presidents, I mean, come on, there's been plenty of change. But since the project has already been vested and approved, I, I just don't want to open up the whole thing for us another can of worms. As far as enforcement on the tree cutting, I have no problem with that, if there's code enforcement wants to come forward and apply fines for those kind of items. But I, I don't understand, if we grant the appeal, what changes? There's more environmental damage as far as that is concerned. That concludes my comments.
Suzanne?
First, I wanted to ask, ask you, Robert, when you mentioned the health of the trees, in the PCCP, does it mention the health of the trees when you're assessing your fees for removing trees?
Greg's here, but I would say that it refers to the health of the forest.
Okay.
So if the forest has too much understory in it, and/or there are trees, you know, so that they should be removed, and there, there is actually a protocol as it relates to describing a, a healthy forest.
Right.
In my view, we've let ours generally get way too overgrown. So included in that would be some trees that are unhealthy, it could be because they're too small and too close together by that definition, but obviously, they're going to, in a forest, there are going to be trees that are dead end or dying, and to an extent, some of that is good, so Greg.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Greg McKenzie, your PCP administrator. Yes, Mr. Chairman, you're basically correct. The difference with the conservation program now is dead or dying trees are no longer netted out from the calculation, they are habitat, they provide habitat to cavity dwellers and nesting, and so that's really the difference. I guess I'll go back a little bit, just another point of clarification relative to the conservation program. So the, the PCP is forward-looking, it's not retroactive. In this case, this project is, not require state and federal permits from the county, in this case, the PCP, because they have those already in place. And so projects not subject to the conservation program, just wanted to make that clarification. Also relative to the oak ordinance, the oak ordinance, basically, when the PCP was adopted, moved from chapter 17, was copied over into 19, the new PCP ordinance. Those prior chapter 17 requirements remain in effect for all projects not subject to the PCP. The PCP has forward-looking, new requirements, new mitigation requirements, that look at the, the landscape, including all the dead and dying trees, not just inch for inch. EJ mentioned, you know, the, the shift in, in the requirements, the shift on this project relative to looking at the woodland, that was a function of the Public Resources Code in the mid-2000s, Public Resources Code changed, required that we start looking at it at, at that level. So that's the, the shift forward-looking to more PCP-friendly projects, and, and now we have the conservation program adopted. So it does look at it from a woodland perspective versus an inch for inch, so.
And so just kind of finishing up, my thought process, thanks Greg, that, you know, staff were to review this project today, from a landscape perspective, my understanding is, I could be wrong, but my understanding is the predominant corridor would be miners' ravine. So there would be incentivization, I would hope, to preserve as much healthy forest there, which would include some dead and dying trees, but not too much understory at the healthy forest with all of those components. And then if there was mitigation for the stuff that was not avoided, it would include a conservation easement in areas that Amber researched, probably, but including the cost of maintaining a healthy forest. So it wouldn't be just buying a conservation easement and hoping everything worked out, it would have a requirement in the conservation easement that the forest be maintained in a healthy state. And, and I think that thought process would take us to a better place.
I agree.
Well, thank you.
Well-stated.
So, Suzanne, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to, to make another clarification. So although the tentative map vested many, many years ago, with the last change in 2021 with the Planning Commission, that was a change to the vested map, correct? When we approved, when the Planning Commission approved pad grading, was that a change to the vested map?
Well, a map modification was requested, and that, that's the distinction here. When a map modification is requested, then planning did, what planning would do is bring that forward with an analysis based on an addendum, and the staff report to either support or not support that amendment. That's different from the vesting component under the law that says you can't apply regulations, ordinances, and other programs that weren't in effect at the time. But that's where Clayton was making the distinction, that what we're talking about in terms of these 47 lots, and the map modification, that's what's in front of the board.
Right, right, for just the 47 lots.
Yes.
Forty-seven lots.
Right.
And of course, as, as Clayton said, the 59 will, allows us to go back and revisit the cost for those, for those trees, correct, for, on the 47 lots only.
So the condition as worded right now has set amounts for both of those two mitigation, the significant oak tree and the woodland conservation. But as a board, you do have discretion to modify that significant tree mitigation fee as to the 47 lots.
Okay. So let me ask you again, then, with this, what we're ruling on today, if we approve the appeal, what, what does that entail? So we know specifically if we vote yes or no.
If you are granting the appeal, what you're doing is setting aside the addendum and the Planning Commission approval. That then reverts to the 2013 approval of this map, which allowed for contour grading on the, I may have my terminology wrong, EJ. It allowed for mass grading on, on the bulk of the property, but for the 47, it reverted to a per-grading permit review of each lot.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
So is there some way that we can amend? I don't think it's the intent to null and void everything, or go back to the original single lot grading. I think it's mainly a relook at the trees and the mitigation cost of the trees. Can we separate that out?
Yes. What you could do is, if you were to make a motion to grant the appeal in part, in order to still approve the Planning Commission's adoption of the addendum and approval of the map modification with modifications to the conditions of approval, you could, you could do that as well.
I would like to make that motion, Robert. But somebody will have to repeat it for me.
Mr. Chairman, if the desire is to reopen the application, we'll withdraw the application.
Wait a second, Marcus, before, I want to make clear the, if we were to do that, then we would also have to grapple with the cost of the additional litigation, would that not be accurate?
Well, you have your tree ordinance, which says fair market value. Now, they have paid, they have paid, so you would be talking the difference between what they paid versus the fair market value. And I think, again, our, our position is this does not apply to the conservation easement, we believe that is different, because it applied to the bulk of the subdivision.
Correct.
So we're only talking about the per fee for the significant trees. And yes, then you would basically look at what our, what our current fair market value is, which according to Lee is 125 per inch DPH. Now, you know, recognizing all the other discussion about the fact that, that the tree program was always intended to be updated and hasn't been, so we would simply be going on what the current fair market value is.
Okay, right. So Marcus, I'm sorry, could you repeat your, I wanted to make sure I had that clarity before.
Yeah, if we're reopening our tree mitigation that we've already paid, opening the conservation value, I am authorized to withdraw the application, so you'll have no action before you. That would, as Mr. Ivaldi said, you would end up with the current approved map, that'll come in, 47 plans at a time. We will still do the contour grading that is allowed on the property. Do want to clarify, the blue-tagged trees, the blue-tagged trees, we have approval right now to remove. We can go out this afternoon and remove all the blue-tagged trees. The property owner wishes to preserve as many of those as possible through the contour grading and the grading on the 42 lots that are approved right now. That's why all those trees in all those places are blue-tagged, because they're taking a special effort to do that. That is going to be substantial cost to the applicant to have, if they have to do, come out still and remove those trees, there is substantial cost. But we are in the process of a project, we have a timeline to deliver lots and come forward with the final map. And if the intent of this board is to reopen, even though we are not affecting condition 59, to reopen the mitigation fee, even though you have no evidence before you to support a higher fee at this point, because you haven't done the analysis, and to reopen the conservation easement, we will withdraw the application, and we will be back to what we are doing, which everyone, from your staff's perspective, wanted to avoid, and as Supervisor Augustin clarified, would result in larger impacts on those lots. Because again, the lots that are going to be custom lots, people come through and say, as you've seen on some of the appeals that have come forward from the zoning administrator to the commission, I'm going to come in with a 10,000-square-foot home, and I am going to put my pool house, and I need all this gone, because I don't want the trees to shed their leaves in my massive pool. And you end up clear-cutting a site, which will already have been paid for, the mitigation will have already been paid for. And so the idea was to try to move away from that, and that's why the effort's been taken for those blue tags that you saw on the site, to try to preserve that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Marcus, before you leave, I had a question. So, so my understanding is you paid for the tree removal based on the worst-case scenario?
Correct.
So if we look at the 47 lots and use what we currently are charging in the county at 125, whether that's accurate for, you know, further or not, might you not even be paying less? I mean, I understand why you're concerned, but the way I understood it is you would be removing less trees, and so even if you pay a higher price per tree, I don't know what removing less trees, and so even if you pay a higher price per tree, I don't know what we're arguing.
We asked that question in 2012. We said, well, gosh, we overmitigated, we are paying for the removal of every significant oak tree on this entire property other than Miners' Ravine. And we said, well, gosh, you know, we'd like to preserve as many of those as possible as the project comes forward, and said, could we get a credit for that? And the county wrote us back, Mr. Evaldi, and said, no, because it's speculative at this point. And so we don't know until you get those, those trees coming forward. So we have, the payment was for 100% of the significant oak trees, so that doesn't benefit us, to say, well, you're removing less because it's already paid. And we've already been told, we've already been told you're not getting it back.
Could we not credit it? I mean, I'm, okay.
It's an administrative headache, and the idea of coming forward at one time and doing one grading plan is you don't have that on 47 separate lots to go out there, you have three inspectors, as we heard, to go out there, as every plot plan comes through, it says, okay, this is only, you're not removing 47 inches on this lot, we're going to write you a check back. I would think your finance department would be real thrilled about that, but also just trying to keep track of that on all the lots. The intent is to try to preserve all, as many as we can, which is what the blue tags are about. That's what, I mean, the builder, literally, they've gone, they go around with each, to each tree with the, with our arborist and our landscape architect to see what they can save, because the idea is to save as many as they can, knowing that they get no credit for that. But the idea was pay your mitigation, that's a deal that was approved by the board in 2010, and we're going to live up to that deal.
Still pros-
Chair Wygant, may I make a comment?
Sure, yep, yep, sure.
So I appreciate the deliberation. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One is, I never opposed the pad grading, that was not what my appeal was about. The appeal is about adequate tree mitigation. So if the scope of the appeal is for the 47 lots and the tree mitigation can be updated, that's the intent of the appeal. It was always the intent of the appeal, it wasn't to say we shouldn't do lot grading, and we should go back, back to this custom grading. Because I agree, there can be many benefits of doing this pad grading, for all the reasons that Supervisor Gustafson outlined. However, on the flip side, I am going to say that it's also speculative to assume that if you didn't do pad grading, that someone's just going to wipe everything out. You could actually assert that someone might only want to build a 1,200-foot home on the property. People like woodland. And so I don't know if you can base record on a speculation that everything will be removed or nothing will be removed. I'm just saying to reclarify, my appeal is about adequate mitigation for the 47 lots. So thank you.
Well, and just for me, as one of five personally, your points are well-taken, and nothing else. Not knowing what we're going to do, obviously, as we're sitting here scratching our heads, I think it's caused us a really healthy discussion about forest management generally, projects in the blue-oc woodland habitat area specifically. We've learned the staff's thought process as we were emerging through these different perspectives, particularly with the PCCP, and I think it's a rich topic for, for further conversations, so we could have more specificity and, and consistency of policy going forward, particularly in light of the PCCP, because it caused me to think that, you know, they're, they're, so the project's going to go forward, staff's going to ponder what the mitigation ought to be specific against, because we're talking about blue-oc woodland mitigation, but you don't want to leave out those key pieces. So, you know, if there was a mitigation, preserve, conservation easement acquired in Granite Bay or in Minna, because of the woods, as you looked at some of those properties, where it is cheaper, by the way.
Yep.
You still don't want to just have the conservation easement sitting there void, it should address the healthy forest concept, like we do with managing vernal pools and/or any other of our, I think, five habitat types that are in the PCCP. So it, you know, I have no idea how we're going to crack this nut, but, but it was a good conversation, I think.
Yeah, and if I could just say one more thing, and I guess I don't understand why the PCCP land conversion couldn't apply, because you could actually not focus on the significant tree in the oak woodland, 59 A and B, and just replace that with the current assessment, which the board all approved, for conversion of land in its oak woodland. So you could use the PCC measure to replace both 59 A and B, and that's based on what the county has estimated it takes to mitigate oak woodland for the acquisition, for the management component. And so I don't understand why you can't use that. I understand why the applicant doesn't want to pay two times the fee, but the applicant's also, also getting the benefit of the real estate market, where the median price of a home is 1.1 million. So I think that, that angle and looking at a 2X of, you know, 500,000, it's really not that much, and it would actually really help support effectively mitigating the impacts that will happen, so.
That's a good point for me personally, I'll just get it out that it's difficult grappling with that in light of the fact that staff conservatively, at that time, made this presumption that there was going to be widespread tree removal of all the valuable trees, and I think it's hard for us today to get a handle on what that market value difference would be, if any, actually, but your point is well-taken.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Chair, if I could just point out for the record, as Greg was saying, PCCP is forward-looking, there is an express exemption within the PCCP program for projects that already have development entitlements, this clearly falls within it, so we cannot apply PCCP to this, to this project. The other thing I would point out while you're deliberating is, the one thing you can also do is weigh the environmental, I don't want to say improvements, but benefits that have been outlined in the staff report and also in the addendum, as to the fact that, that by doing this one grading plan, what environmental benefits you have from that, and weigh that versus the issue of the fee for the oak trees. So I think that's also somewhere you can go with this.
Suzanne, and then Jim.
So in, in a sense, if, if we were to assess this fair market value, but also let the developer not pay it until the end, because if the sense is to preserve as many trees as you can, then that's also going to reduce that, that mitigation cost. You're talking $25 a tree, right? If the fair market value is $125, and they've already paid $100, I mean, not per tree, but per inch.
Per inch.
And that, but that survey of the, the size of the trees has already been done. We, now we can't go and assess the size of the trees today.
I, I don't know, I don't know, I think it would be speculative for me to include anything on that. I, I don't know what trees are in the various building pads.
Well, it would be difficult, because a lot of trees are gone, you're going to have a tough time identifying those trees.
I think you have to look at this map modification in its whole, 47 lots.
Right.
The map modification is to come in with one grading plan, but to create building pads.
Right.
And then look at the other aspects of what that modification will do in terms of the environment, and look at it in its total.
Right.
Is, again, you know, it's, yes, you could assess, they could pay the difference, I have no clue what that is, whether it would be more, whether it would be less, but, you know, there are other aspects of this project that you should take into account.
Right, and I think what you just said was a good idea.
Jim.
Didn't the applicant just come forward and say that if we want to go down this path, he's going to withdraw the application? Is that correct?
Yeah, if you're reopening the fee, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Holmes, we withdraw the application. If you're going to reopen our per, per-inch fee and our conservation easement value that was set and accepted by the board in 2010, then we would have no choice, because then we're in this no-man's-land for a while, and we have to deliver lots. By the way, there won't be 1,200-square-foot homes in this house, on this project, it's 4,200 to 5,000.
Yeah, and so if, if we did that, who wins? I mean, if they, if they remove the application, we move, we don't win it, nobody wins anything. We still have all of the environmental, more environmental damage to the project, and so I just couldn't support that.
Jim.
Ms. Chair, first of all, I appreciate the discussion, there are certain things that we need to look at moving forward, and I'm fully supportive of that, as far as any fees that may be, penalty fees, that would be up to the code enforcement. But again, if the applicant removes the application, we're kind of in limbo, and they can just go ahead and cut trees that have already been approved to be cut, correct? So it would be my motion to deny the third-party appeal filed by Amber Beckler, uphold the Planning Commission's May 13, 2021 decision to adopt the addendum to the previously certified environmental impact report prepared for the Rancho del Oro Estates Project pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, and uphold the Planning Commission's May 13, 2021 decision to approve the Rancho del Oro Estates vesting tentative map modification subject to the conditions attached to the staff report.
Motion, Holmes, second, Gustafson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, go back with the roll call.
Yeah. Gore, absent. Holmes?
Aye.
Jones? Gustafson? Wygant?
Yes. Okay, so that completes this item. One thing before we leave, though, based on this discussion, so Chair, I get to put anything on the agenda, so with that, and making sure I don't do something like that, I want, I, I'd like to follow up this conversation to create more clarity as it relates to board policy on this broad discussion we had today as it relates to interpreting these things going forward in light of the conservation plan and the standards. And I don't know if that needs to come back to the board, but maybe you guys could sit down and discuss at County, at County Council's office, and somehow, maybe we'll bring back a board item, or maybe there's just an update as to how we would sort of resolve this conversation going forward.
Yep, we'll absolutely do that.
Okay, thanks.
And a report on the enforcement action?
Yeah, and a report on the enforcement action. And, and I'm not sure, January 1st, so, so if you can have that conversation before, and then we'll come back. Yeah, thanks. Okay, and then I'm supposed to do, oh, the board, today, we're going to go into closed session after this. We were going to, and then we're on our way to Lake Tahoe to have our quarterly meeting up there predominantly tomorrow, but we were going to have a tour, that tour has been canceled due to smoke and weather conditions, but there is a-
Yes, Chairman, so the board was going to partake in a tour with the Tahoe Regional Transportation Agency to discuss, planning agency, thank you, to discuss invasive species, water quality, and forest health. Unfortunately, due to the smoke coming from the fires, the, you won't be able to see anything up there right now. So we're going to cancel that tour, but the board will still be partaking in a reception hosted by the Tahoe City Public Utility District.
Excellent, so the board will now adjourn to closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session.
Could everybody hold it down a little bit, so we can-
The board will now adjourn to closed session, consider the item of existing litigation, County of Placer versus Amerisaurus Bergon, which is 1A, 1B, Clifton Shepherd versus Robert Wygant.
And I will be recusing myself from that.
And C would be Inray Michael Whitfield. The board will then consider two items of labor negotiations.
Thank you. The board has returned from closed session, and County Council, report out.
The board meant in closed session to consider, under existing litigation, County of Placer versus Amerisaurus Bergon. The board heard a report, no action was requested or taken. In Shepherd versus Wygant, the board heard a report and provided direction. In Inray Michael Whitfield, the board heard a report and authorized settlement. In the two items of labor negotiations, DSA and PC Lima, the board heard a report for each individual item and provided direction. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you. With that, that concludes our business of the day, and we are adjourned.